Is anybody here?
Meeting called order, please. Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted to stay the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Getchier.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noonan.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rook.
Here.
Eleven present.
Do you have any moment of silence? Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Nancy Elaine Asian Audess. Nancy was raised in Tewksbury and attended the Academy of Notre Dame and was graduated in 1981 from Radcliffe College, studying first government, then psychology and social relations. Nancy began a successful business career at Federated Department Stores Filings, rising quickly to become their youngest vice president. Stella intellect, sharp wit, and a boundless work ethics distinguished Nancy's business career from the very beginning. Those attributes teamed with exceptional personal skills and a smile that could light up Times Square ensured the rapid success she achieved. But Nancy found her true calling in public service. After several years as executive director of the girls' club in Lowell, in 1990 Nancy, then surnamed Sullivan, became the first Republican to win the District Five Senate seat since her uncle fifty years before. Her crowning achievement was the passage of Senate Bill 471 guaranteeing free mammograms for low-income residents. Nancy's own breast cancer and treatment preluded her reelection, but she later served almost ten years as executive director of the Massachusetts Board of Registration and Medicine. Her knowledge of the American healthcare system as both regulator and experienced patient placed her amongst the top experts countrywide for the state medical boards. Nancy also served the American Red Cross, co-founded the Pan-Mass Challenge, and worked as town manager for Winham. Her tireless spirit will remain an inspiration to all who knew her. Nancy survived Hodgkin's lymphoma, breast cancer twice, open-heart surgery, and a life-altering stroke. A mere mortal might have given up in the face of such adversity, but she pushed through each setback with genuine grace. In 2018, Nancy married David Kellogg in Andover. She was predeceased by sisters Suzanne and Elizabeth and her beloved husband Henry Audess. She is survived by her siblings Frederick Asian Junior, Patrice Kenny, and Kristen Maza. We offer our sincere condolences to her family, relatives, and many friends. She will be truly missed. And if I might also add, I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for William B. Billy Z. Zounas. Billy attended Lowell High School, after which he joined the United States Army as a communications officer during the Korean War. He was employed at Raytheon for many years. Later in his career, he served as the Director of Veterans Affairs, first in Lowell and later in Drakot. Assisting local veterans was very important to Bill, as he truly enjoyed helping people. During his years of service in Drakot, he was honored at the Massachusetts State House and was awarded Best Veterans Agent of the Year in 2005. Bill was a man of deep faith. His kindness, generosity, and compassion will be remembered by all who knew him. Bill is survived by his son Michael Zounas, his daughter Mary Ann, and his friend and former wife Lynn Cody. In addition to his parents and his two brothers, he is also predeceased by his loving former wife Anne Apostolakis Zounas. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends. And let us not forget to do a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for all those who have passed since our last council meeting. May they rest in peace. There is also the tragic death of the four-year-old from Mead Street in that horrific fire, but we will do a better one next week because I don't want to miss any of her family. Thank you.
Counselor Rook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a moment of silence in Docking Chambers for Brenda C. Plant, Ru Forest, 72, of Lowell, Mass. Passed away peacefully on Sunday, February 27, 2022, after a brief illness surrounded by her family. She was the wife of the late Gerald W. Forest, who passed away in November 2020 after seventeen years of marriage. She was born December 31, 1949 in Lowell and was a daughter of the late Wilford Plant and the late Evelyn Oracott Plant. She was raised in Lowell, where she attended the area schools grudgingly from Lowell High School. Brenda was a ministry assistant of the Household Finance in downtown Lowell, Dr. Tavano's Medical Practice, Bollett Radiology, St. John's Hospital, and Emerson Hospital until her retirement in 2021. She was a communicant of St. Patrick's Church and a member of the Ladies' Auxiliary at the VFW in Lowell, Mass. and Merrimack, New Hampshire. She loved cribbage and played in various leagues. She also enjoyed crafting, knitting, being the photographer at all her family events, and especially loved spending time with her grandchildren. Brenda is survived by her two sons, Christopher Ru of Lowell and Timothy Ru and his wife Angela of Concord, North Carolina; her four grandchildren, Zachary Ru, Jackson Ru, Morgan Ru, and Olivia Ru; her sister Lisa McCurley and her husband Michael of Bradford, Mass; her brother Brian Plant of Cape Coral, Florida; her sister-in-law Carol Plant of Lowell; and many nieces and nephews. Thank you.
To Mayor's Business, 2.1, Communication Remote. Motion by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Janess, on favor say aye. Post say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Before I go to 2.2, I would like to welcome Jen and Paul from CALAA, the Cambodian-American Literary Arts Association here from Lowell. Thank you for being here, you taking videos for YouTube and blogging for the young viewers out there, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you. My name is Patricia Hyatt. I live at 47 South Whipple Street in Lowell. We run a nonprofit called Matthew 2535, right here in Lowell. We feed, clothe, and provide for about 175 to 185 homeless unhoused folks in Lowell a night, seven days a week. I'm not asking, I'm not coming here looking for money. I'm not looking for anything really from the city. We're looking to help. We've been doing this for almost two years. Currently, we're partnered with the Wish Project, Merrimack Valley Food Bank. We have Safe Serve certifications and allergen certifications. We have a registered kitchen. We, just in the month of January, we served over 5,000 meals. That's just food. The actual number was 5,425, seven days a week, no less than 175 people. These are human beings. I'm only asking for three things. The first one is that the city please create a list of providers that doesn't just include the shelters. Some of these folks will not go to a shelter mainly because of PTSD or other mental illness, so they can't deal with a shelter. So that leaves them outside. There needs to be a broader sense of who's out there serving and who can do the most help. How do we get these folks to get the assistance they need? These folks trust us. We're going to be their first line to get them back inside again and to get them to trust a system to help them. The second thing, weekly trash pickups. The camps look atrocious. The dumpster didn't work, and they need help to get rid of the garbage. These people are living amongst rats and bugs. It's hard enough as it is. And the third thing, and I know this one's a stretch, Mayor, I know it is, but they need jobs. And on every job application, they look for address. If they don't have an address, they can't get a job. They can't get an address if they don't have a job. It's a vicious cycle. They need help. We have so many of these people that say we just want a job. How do we get out of this if we can't get a job? I don't know if the city can help with that, but they need help. And right now, we're kind of the first line of defense out there. We've been out there through COVID, through this whole thing. They need help, Mayor. They really need help. And so we kind of are relying on the city council and you, Mayor. We are. If we can even just create a list, a huge list, where everybody is helping each other, we can help these people get out of the situation faster. If they trust all of us as a united front, we can hopefully get them back inside again to start a process of doing better in their own lives. We're not looking for money. We're just looking for assistance from the city to say, listen, we're here for you and we want to help you. If we have this list and we put it all together on everybody who's willing to help them and they see that, maybe they'll step up and say, hey, wait a minute, my city's here for me. That's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mercier.
Don't we have a homeless commission? Wouldn't the homeless commission be aware of all the groups out there that are feeding, like the Elliott Church feeds? I don't know them all, but there's a group of them that, I don't know why we can't share that list. Yes.
Madam Manager.
Thank you. You know, in response to a motion further on this evening, D, it lists out all of the initiatives and the lists of providers and so forth. And we did have a pamphlet provided so that people who are homeless would have access to that. So we can certainly share that. But that, as I said, it's in more full detail in the response to motion D, all of the ongoing initiatives. And there are a lot, and I think, you know, making sure everybody has access and understands what those are and where those are.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. What's the process to be added to that list of providers in the community?
Christine McCall is here. She could answer the question. I know these are, the providers have like weekly meetings, and then there are also monthly meetings, but Christine, if you can address that.
So it depends on, we do have a pamphlet of resources that I'll have to review and update. I don't see why we couldn't add this nonprofit to that pamphlet. The weekly meetings that are provided in, that we have with Lowell Connector and Co., I'm not sure that that would be an appropriate place for this group to be at. We're actually going over individual case management, and so privacy is of the utmost importance in protecting people's personal information. We do have monthly homeless provider meetings that are public, and we can make that available to this organization that they can join. And that's really all the providers meet every month to go over resources, to go over issues that they're facing in organizations. It is both a networking and a resource-sharing opportunity. The city does have a hunger and homeless commission, and that, where the homeless provider meeting, we do talk about hunger, but mostly primarily focused on homelessness issues. The Hunger Homeless Commission was unique in that it was very similar to how the hunger, to how the monthly homeless provider meetings are run, except it was a primary focus on food. And that group stopped meeting at the beginning of the pandemic because they met in person and didn't switch to Zoom. And then a lot of the members were up for renewal, and so they're in holdover positions and then didn't, and some don't want to continue. And that is actually something that when we hire a new Director of Homelessness Initiatives, that they'll, that position will administer and get that back up and running. And again, that's another meeting that this organization, I think, would be very appropriate to attend. And I'd be glad to share my contact information and provide it.
Any other comment? Thank you, Patricia, for coming to speak tonight, and thank you for your service to the community, and it's a good night for you to come. And you heard from Ms. McCall. She'll give you the information. You can get in touch with her and update the list and see if she can connect you with other organizations as well to have you as a service to the city. The motion, if no other comments, motion accept and placed on file by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Noonan. All in favor, motion is approved. Four, Auditor Business, 4.1. I may skip that one. Okay. City Clerk, 3.1, in my haste to move down the agenda, it's easy for me to skip like a big paragraph here. City Clerk, 3.1, Minister of Rules Subcommittee, March 1. City Council Regular Meeting, March 1, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Yem. All in favor, say aye. Motion is approved. Four, Auditor Business, 4.1, Communication, Payroll, Direct Deposit. Any comments or questions?
I think Counselor Getchier has a comment. He's going to have to, yeah, he's on the Zoom. Yeah. Counselor Getchier.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I want to thank the auditor for this report. I do think it's important that we do go more to the paperless stream, and I think this is a start of doing that, and I thank Auditor Oates for this report. Thank you.
Counselor Getchier, if I could just ask you when you want to speak in, sometimes you can, you can interrupt through the Zoom and get our attention vocally.
Thank you.
Any other comment, Counselor Mercier?
Yes, we're on the report for the payroll. Is it possible, after reading this report, can we get a cost on how much it would take to implement changes to payroll from manual to help us get into the 21st century? I think that it's important, from what I'm gathering, they don't have, they're doing everything manually. How much is it going to cost us to get, you know, modernized in that? I don't mean disrespect, but I mean, maybe they need some help to get into getting better equipment to make it much easier. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Through Madam Manager, does the auditor have any comments?
Yes, we actually have all the tools, I think, needed within the Munis platform to implement, you know, changes to make it more electronic and to make it work more efficiently. We do need additional staff, I think, in auditing to help implement all these changes because it's going to take, you know, a citywide effort, you know, the city working with the school, with MIS. But we do have the software tools available to make this happen, so.
So you have the software tools, you just don't have the people to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we're, everything is under discussion trying to get additional staffing in auditing specifically focused on payroll so that we can implement these changes. So yes, it's all in.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. All our groups go in paperless or direct deposit, or are there still some groups left that receive paper in-hand checks?
Yeah, I mean, most people are on direct deposit, but there are still groups of employees who choose to have their paychecks, you know, a live check cut.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the Madam Manager, through the Manager to the Auditor. So, well, maybe to the Manager, but should we do a study to see, would we be saving money if everybody were on an automatic, on a direct deposit, and would that help pay for some staffing, you know? Is there savings there? Whoever's best to answer.
I think the auditor.
Okay.
I think the savings would be realized by switching to a bi-weekly payroll. With a weekly payroll, we're running, you know, it's always a, we're always running payroll.
Okay.
I don't think the cost, there's a great cost associated still with, you know, a paper check because it's still, I think the savings would be realized through, you know, going to a bi-weekly or a bi-monthly payroll versus a weekly payroll.
All right. And does that need to be, is that something that can be implemented, like with new hires, or is it not worth it and you just need to do all of, or all or nothing?
No, I mean, we would have to change the entire city, the entire, you know, everybody who's on the payroll to, you know, we'd have to change the entire process. It is, you know, it's all included in the collective bargaining agreements currently, so we can do it. It's just a matter of planning for the implementation because it will have an impact.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here, Non, Motion to Accept and Place on File by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Janess, on favor say aye. Motion is approved. Five, Communication from City Manager. We do have people here from the high school to discuss on the construction budget. If I could have a motion to suspend the rule by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Robinson, all in favor say aye. Motion is approved. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Thank you for allowing us to give a brief presentation on this matter. It is, it is something that we intend and intended to have on the council agenda for next Tuesday. It will still be on the council agenda, so I just want members of the public to know they will have ample opportunity to be heard. This will be scheduled, but it's on tonight, and we've asked our consultants to come and give a brief presentation regarding the high school budget and overages on the budget. This has been a work in progress now for the past months, and it has obviously been worked on and by Suffolk, by Skanska, by everybody concerned. And we have, as we sit here tonight, we don't have the exact final number of the overage, though we've gotten closer to it and closer to a ballpark number. We do expect to have those numbers finalized and vetted this week so that they will be on the agenda next week. But I thought it was important to have our consultants here to give a brief presentation and answer any questions because there was a report today that seemed, in some respects, like it was some definitive information that we still don't have ourselves. And I think the council and the public deserve to know directly from the consultants where we stand and why. And so the overages that we've talked about from time to time here on the council floor that we're looking at, we're waiting on big bid packages, especially packages that were affected by COVID, and we will have, as I said, a greater detail, an opportunity to have greater detail on the next agenda. But with your permission, I'd just ask, we have Rex Radloff from Suffolk who's here, also Sean Edwards from Suffolk is here, from Skanska. We have Mary Ann Williams, as well as Jim Dowd. I'd ask Rex to just give a brief presentation on the, where we stand on these overages and if there are follow-up questions. I will then come back and just talk about a, steps we've been taking to try and do our due diligence to give the council as much information as we can in and around the overages in the project and possible paths forward. So Rex, if you could address some of those issues.
Yes, please.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone, for having me. And so today, I'm just going to give a very brief overview on the budget, fall back to our procurement timeframe, that's when we buy out the subcontractors, also head-on, the means of how we estimated the budget itself and how we got here, and then touch on market conditions as well as COVID, because that's a lot of the underlying, that is the underlying matter which we've been dealing with. So with that said, our estimating timeframe started actually back in 2009. We reconciled the project at $270 million, 444. That's the construction cost. That was right. who's on the payroll to, you know, we'd have to change the entire process. It is, it is, you know, it's all included in the collective bargaining agreements currently, so we can do it, it's just a matter of planning for the implementation because it will have an impact.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Here we're on motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Mousia, second by Counselor Janess, all in favor say aye, motion is approved. Five, Communication from City Manager, we do have people here from the high school to discuss on the construction budget. If I could have a motion to suspend the rule by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Robinson, all in favor say aye, motion is approved. Madam Manager?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Thank you for allowing us to give a brief presentation on this matter. It is, it is something that we intend and intended to have on the council agenda for next Tuesday, it will still be on the council agenda, so I just want members of the public to know, they will have ample opportunity to be heard, this will be scheduled, but it's on tonight and we've asked our consultants to come and give a brief presentation regarding the high school budget and overages on the budget. This has been a work in progress now for the past months and it has obviously been worked on and by Suffolk, by Skanska, by everybody concerned. And we have, as we sit here tonight, we don't have the exact final number of the overage, though we've gotten closer to it and closer to a ballpark number. We do expect to have those numbers finalized and vetted this week so that they will be on the agenda next week. But I thought it was important to have our consultants here to give a brief presentation and answer any questions because there was a report today that seemed, in some respects, like it was some definitive information that we still don't have ourselves and I think the council and the public deserve to know directly from the consultants where we stand and why. And so the overages that we've talked about from time to time here on the council floor that we're looking at, we're waiting on big bid packages, especially packages that were affected by COVID and we will have, as I said, a greater detail and opportunity to have greater detail on the next agenda. But with your permission, I'd just ask, we have Rex Radloff from Suffolk who's here, also Sean Edwards from Suffolk is here, from Skanska, we have Mary Ann Williams as well as Jim Dowd. I'd ask Rex to just give a brief presentation on the, where we stand on these overages and if there are follow-up questions. I will then come back and just talk about a, steps we've been taking to try and do our due diligence to give the council as much information as we can in and around the overages in the project and possible paths forward. So Rex, if you could address some of those issues?
Yes, please.
Perfect. Thank you everyone for having me and so today I'm just going to give a very brief overview on the budget, fall back to our procurement timeframe, that's when we buy out the subcontractors, also head on the means of how we estimated the budget itself and how we got here and then touch on market conditions as well as COVID because that's a lot of the underlying, that is the underlying matter which we've been dealing with. So with that said, our estimating timeframe started actually back in 2009. We reconciled the project at $270 million, 444, that's the construction cost. That was reconciled between Suffolk, Skanska, PM plus C, that's the estimator through Perkins Eastman, our architect. That was done so in 2019. We again reconciled the budget in 2000, later 2019, on a 60% set at the same exact budget. And real briefly, just take a step back, when I say reconcile a budget, in short, that just means that a collection of estimators come together and come to an agreement on a budget. So specifically PM plus C and Suffolk were able to come to an agreement on a budget, not only from the beginning of 2019, but middle of 2019. And then again, at the end of 2020, December of 2020 that is, we were able to reconcile again, 270 million, 444, that's between PM plus C and Suffolk. Afterwards, we were able to begin to buy out the trades itself, starting with an early bid package, which really didn't give us any too much concern. By the way, an early bid package allows us to just get started with construction while the design takes place. Those packages actually came in lower. It wasn't until we started to, or it wasn't until April of '21 when we received the filed sub bids. These are packages that are outside of Suffolk's control purchasing department, just based on Chapter 149A bidding laws, there's a package of subcontractors that are bid out separately through the city. Those packages came in about 4% high and that was the first time we realized there was something more at hand here that wasn't in line with the market conditions when we bid the job. And so that took place almost about a year ago, April of '21, and that's when Suffolk, Perkins Eastman, Skanska and the city were able to get together and begin, begin to assess where, where the procurement of the remaining trades are going to, going to fall through the VE process and also just further scope clarifications, which by the way helps bidding. If you could imagine if we refined the scope a little more, bidders can understand a, it can sharpen their pencils if you will, the term goes. From that assessment, we were able to really narrow in on a handful of subcontractors or trades where we see an increase in costs that is much, much more above and beyond what we're already seeing. For example, the filed sub bids came in 4% high, but we were seeing steel prices, drywall prices, lumber prices exceeding 100% material cost. And that was also reflected within the, the scope or the bids that we were starting to, starting to see. So we knew that our exposure, if you will, fell within those packages. Also to take another step back, we were trending about 11% high overall than the budget, which we reconciled five other times between 2019 and 2020. We saw about 11% increase on that. So we had to take a step back and understand what were the causes for this. We knew that these numbers were, were reflective of the market simply because we competitively bid. When you have three bidders, you're able to get competitive pricing and get the best cost for the job. So we knew that we were getting the best cost for the job, but we wanted to understand, does that make sense with where the market is at? Because if it didn't, we had another issue at hand, that meant our budget was just not correctly estimated. So what we were able to do is start to really research market conditions, specifically use a resource, AGC, Association of General Contractors. This is a resource that's used very heavily between architects, CMs, owners, when it comes to understanding just certain metrics within the industry. If it's material cost, overall project cost, not just within construction, or not just within a building construction, but throughout all of construction. And what we were able to find was specifically steel costs, gypsum costs, lumber costs and aluminum were, were well over anticipated market conditions at the time. We were seeing increases between 24 to 150% between all of these materials. Now those materials I just rattled off are specifically in line with the remaining packages, steel, curtain wall and drywall. And so even though that doesn't take away from the issue at hand, it does paint a picture on how we got here. Again, going back to, we knew our bidding process was good or sound, but something happened and that was the market changed drastically. We also were able to go to the AGC to understand, well, what does a project such as the Lowell High School job look like between estimating it back in 2020 and bidding it back in 2021? Well, the AGC being such a vast resource was able to show us that based on specifically new construction schools between that timeframe, the exact window that we're bidding, showed about a 12% increase. Not to make light of the situation at all, we were at 11%, which just further reinforced the exposure here. So it's one thing to understand where our numbers are at compared to the market, but it's another thing to understand, well, why did the market go up? You know, I hate to just use a blanket statement that we've been using for the past year, but it really is COVID. This is when the market went up, back in 2019, from when we first started estimating it. We saw a factory shutdown, a loss of labor and then effectively bottlenecks. Those bottlenecks result in increased lead times, increased lead times not only is detrimental to a schedule, which we of course have been able to manage thus far, but also comes with the cost. So in essence, what we've been able to do from the very beginning all the way to now is get a, build a budget, but then also understand where it, where it was tracking as we begin the bidding process. So right now, we are dealing with final numbers and we are going to present those, but I wanted to share that with everyone today, between the true exposures of, between the budget and, and the cost of work. And those true exposures really come down to three packages, steel, curtain wall and drywall, which have a tremendous material increase that we saw, and then also an overall inflation of building cost, which was also been able to be substantiated within the market. You know, that was a lot of material quickly and I didn't want to take up too much time, but that, that's in essence where we're at with everything. And I invite any questions and we also have Skanska here to, to answer along as, as well as myself.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Last time you were in, we were asking these questions and we were reassured repeatedly, everything's on schedule. We're not worried about prices. Everything's on schedule. The songs change quite a bit in four weeks. Can I ask, any other projects finding the same 25 to 150% increases on these same gypsum steel materials or is this unique to our situation?
So on the, two parts, a couple of parts to your question, we still aren't on schedule from phase one all the way to phase four, our schedule's showing that. As far as other projects showing increase in pricing, yes, Suffolk has seen a tremendous increase in pricing. The difference between our job and new jobs is being able to capture that inflation, which markets have been able to do so. Other jobs are paying more, but they're able to capture it within the budget as opposed to our project, which was bid out at a time where these, the magnitude of inflation that we're seeing right now wasn't there. So that, that is the difference.
Counselor Mousia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about my back Rex, I can't turn around now like that. I'm just concerned about when you came before us the last time and I asked you if we were on time and on budget and you said yes. And today I'm listening to a radio and I'm hearing that we're between 30 million and 35 million to the bid, like we're shot at and I don't understand, is that true?
So right now, the major packages that were remaining to be bid last time we spoke was drywall, gypsum and curtain wall. Those packages were, came in over about $22 million. This is an exposure that we did not know at the time and we reserved our comments pending, pending those values coming in.
I thought that you said last time that you stood here, that because we're on time and on budget on phase one, you didn't anticipate any overage and I said, well, the cost because of COVID and the prices must have went up with the wood and the lumber and the this and the materials and you, I specifically hear you say, well, we knew about what we needed in advance and we already bought the material. And now I'm hearing, well, gypsum went up and steel went up and, I mean, why are we hearing one thing and now we're hearing another?
So to answer the question, I do recall that question and it was in reference to what we've bought out today. So for those trades that we bought out today, even with phase one, phase one steel, phase one curtain wall, phase one drywall, those prices are locked in. If we were to buy those trades out later, those prices would have been inflated.
Can I ask you, where are you getting 270 million? Because this is my understanding of the figures. The project to me, I understand, was 343 million, 210 million was paid for, was coming from the state. So the taxpayer is responsible for 133 million, so where does 270 million, 270 million come from?
Very fair question. The 270 is the cost of construction. There is further costs on the owner's side, be it owner contingency, FFNE and other items that fall outside of construction cost. I'm speaking just for the construction cost.
So we're talking about 137 million more? Because I, I thought the taxpayer was responsible for 133 million and so now you're telling me 270?
Those are not the figures that we're looking at and we're still working through the figures nonetheless.
Let me just reiterate the fact that the school, mass school, MSBA is not going to pay another dime, so if you go up any amount of millions, it's going to be on the backs of the taxpayer because they're not going to pay anymore. We're not going to get anymore, I just want you to know that. The city already asked if we could have any help if there's any overages and, and we can't. So we're going to be stuck with that.
So to answer your question, the number 270 million was the estimated budget that has gone in with six different estimates to the Mass School Building Authority, excuse me, five different estimates to the Mass School Building Authority during the development of design. That was just strictly the construction cost, that's what the 270 million is. The, the overage that we're talking about is with the trades that bid in phases two through four, three trades in particular, the steel, the curtain wall and the drywall. That's where we saw the increase. We didn't see the increase in the early packages or in phase one, which demonstrates our point actually, that we didn't have an issue because we bid that pre-COVID and then when we bid the other packages at a later date for the later phases, that's where we started to see the numbers coming in. Something I think that's really important to, to look at here is that when we submit to the Mass School Building Authority, there is a complete peer review done of those submissions. There were five submissions there and if they thought the cost was excessive or the costs were under, they would have flagged it in their comments to us. So when we, for example, speak with three to five steel companies and they all say the same thing, this isn't one company saying it, but they all say the same thing where they say, look, we've been given a price, we've been told by our supplier that the price is only good for the next three days, five days, one week and we haven't, and it's a public procurement process and we haven't gone through all of the bids for just strictly the steel, okay? We were getting consistent feedback from companies that were competing with each other that there was a problem in the market and avail, that there was a problem with the availability of materials, that there was a labor shortage and that the lead times for materials were going way out, sometimes doubling. You know, so if you thought you were going to get steel in 16 to 20 weeks, all of a sudden we were being told it's going to be 26 weeks or 30 weeks, so.
And, and this isn't just half of it either because we still haven't settled with the doctors' project that was torn down, that's still in court. We still don't know if there's another 10 million that they're going to be looking for and be awarded, so we still have that on our plate. So I am saying, and I'm going to say what I perfectly honestly feel, that I think we would have been a heck of a way more forward if we had built this school from scratch and knew and didn't have to put lipstick on a pig and take a building and start transforming it and not anticipating all the things that we were going to uncover. That's my personal opinion. I think this, you know, if, I hope to God that I'm not going to hear that we're going up 30 and 35 more million and put it on the backs of taxpayers. I, I just, if, if that's the case, then I think that we should go to our senator and ask Ed Kennedy if he can foot the rest of the bill since he wanted and was a big supporter of having this remodeling done downtown, because I still think there's more to uncover that we haven't even met yet. So this is my opinion, thank you.
Before we continue, Madam Speaker, would you please state your name so some of the councilor know and the public would know also?
Yes, my name is Mary Ann Williams, I'm the program executive for Skanska on the project.
Thank you. We'll go to Counselor Rourke, Counselor Gitchia, Counselor Scott and then Counselor Drinkwater. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the first question for Rex is, the 11% that you're talking about, is that based on 270 or 340, what's that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
So yeah, so 11% is the, is what you're seeing for the over?
The 11% is on the 270, that's the 11% increase on construction cost that I presented here today.
So the contingency money that's there, is that included?
So there's several forms of contingency, we have construction contingency that is still, still within the budget. We also have an owner's contingency that's still within the budget outside of construction costs. The contingencies that have been used have been the escalation contingency as well as the estimating contingency, which was used appropriately during the, the estimating process when we do that.
So can you give a total contingency fund altogether and then what's been used so far?
What has been used so far? We started, actually I do have that, we started with around 25 million, I want to say, and between estimating and, estimating and escalation contingency that we've been able to use. And we still have construction contingency to be used as well and owner contingency, but that is used during construction.
So how much has been used? You said 20, the total was?
Let me get you a, a good figure on that because I actually have that here. So the estimating and escalation contingency total is $24 million. That has been used up appropriately through the estimating phase and the remaining contingency that we have for construction, we are showing $7 million remaining to be used for construction.
Okay, so when you, so you use the word, the budget number 11%, that's 7 million is separate from the 11%?
No, that's a part of, that's, that's all in, so that's a part of that number.
So the first time you were here, was that 11% number known when you gave the update about both the gymnasium and things like that?
That 11% number became known in the relatively near future after our, that, that is tied to the purchasing of the steel, curtain wall and drywall, which just took place in the past week.
So you, so you just said that in 2019, 2020, you recognized a 4% then 11% budget increase that were, that was reconciled?
For, I'm sorry, say that again?
So in 2019 and 2020, there was a 11% increase, it had to be reconciled?
No.
Okay.
In 2009 and 2020, we reconciled the budgets between PM plus C or NC and Suffolk and as well as Skanska during those timeframes.
So how was that done?
That was done through independently estimating the job between PM and C or Suffolk, AM and C and Skanska. We come together, our values are always never perfect, but close enough, and then we go through on a line-by-line basis to identify which estimates are either high or low, we come to an agreement on that. The time, the process of this actually takes about 10 to 12 hours per reconciliation and then we come to. And then we come together and come to an agreement collectively on what the budget should be. So it's a very thorough process that is not done at a high level, but actually on an itemized basis.
So the final design that was brought forward and was submitted to the MSBA from the city and the design before anything was done whatsoever? Is that same design still being followed to the T?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then I guess this would be a question, and I'm not sure who for, but if the MSBA is telling us that because it's not allowed to use the money because it's only COVID-related expenses, but then, you know, the main reason for the overruns is COVID, like something doesn't jive there, right?
Madam Manager?
Yeah, just again, briefly, in, in an effort to get some answers, especially around the MSBA, we did have a call with the MSBA on this issue. And so the MSBA is essentially when the project funding agreement is signed, and that was back, you know, a few years back, where the estimates come together, everybody comes together, we all agree on a price, and we all agree this is the budget. We sign it, they sign it, and that's the budget. But that's before we go out to bid. But they, their policy is that they don't amend the project funding agreement once it's, once it's signed, because they go out and they bond the project and do all those things. This is unique because it, it is COVID. And we had, we discussed that with them in the call, and they recognized that. They did not get COVID money from the legislature, however. So, you know, there's COVID relief money. Sometimes it's gone to, in, for example, they brought up that DESI received $100 million for COVID expenses, but it was limited to the vocational schools. So this wouldn't be eligible.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, yeah, I mean, this case, it's not the MSBA that I guess I'm asking about. I mean, they have broken many of their own rules throughout this whole process. My, my question is that the feds are telling us that we can't use ARPA money.
Well, that's what our, our outside auditor said we could use approximately 2 million was what the outside auditor said.
But, you know, so if the main reason for anywhere from a 10 to 15% overrun from, I guess you would say, 28 million to 30 something million dollars, and the main reason is COVID.
Right. So the MSBA said the following.
You know, so, you know, see how it doesn't make sense?
Yeah, no, I agree. And so what the MSBA said in our call is that, that they suggest that we go to the legislature and to the administration to get this money from COVID money, because they didn't get a COVID allotment, the MSBA. So, and they're supportive of this. We, we, we talked about that. So this is a situation where the, the budget was established before anybody knew anything about COVID or about a pandemic. And then because of the size and the duration of the project, it goes out to bid, early bid packages were fine, but it's the recent ones, the past, you know, month or so, that we saw the skyrocket of these things. They recognize it's COVID. They agree that this is all COVID-related. It wasn't a budget miscalculation or anything like that. And we had conversations about seeking relief from the legislature.
Okay, yeah, maybe, maybe I'm just asking the question the wrong way. So we're sitting on $75 million in, in ARPA money? The MSBA saying we can't use it for the school?
No, the MSBA doesn't take a position on it.
Right, that's my point, right? They have nothing to do with this.
They have nothing to do with it.
If COVID is the reason why we are 30 to 35 million dollars over.
Right.
Who's telling the city that we can't use ARPA money to make a school?
Well, that was Powers and Sullivan. So the reason, you know, for, for example, the reason we went to Powers and Sullivan is because the question had been asked by the council, can we use ARPA money? So in an effort to try and do due diligence and get as much information as we can, we went to Powers and Sullivan and asked them, under the treasury rules, can we use, what can we use for, for this? And that's what they came back, we gave that to the council, I think about a week ago. And then in furtherance of trying to do due diligence, we set up a call with Skanska, Suffolk, and the MSBA this week to say, here we are, we know there's an excess, we don't have the definite number, but we know it's substantial, it's in the $30 million range. What participation can you give us on this as far as the overage? And so what they explained is, they understand it's COVID, but because of their rules and policy, they don't change the funding agreement. But they did talk to us in terms of a go-forward of how to seek monies, whether it's, and that's a process that they will be supportive of.
So I guess as of right now, I know you spoke earlier about it, I guess our option is going to be to take an additional bond vote to reconcile the, the money, right? And I guess, you know, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but you know, how many more times as a council are we going to expect to vote on an additional bond thing for, you know, a budget that should be set and, and ready to go? I guess it's a rhetorical question, but.
No, it's a good question, because the, the point, and it's a question that I've had as well, is this, is this just this phase? So we, we, and I think the question was asked tonight. Phase one, everything looked pretty, pretty good. We had already bid it, we didn't get caught in the COVID, you know, tsunami, and, and it was on, on budget and moving along. Now we're bidding phases two, three, four, the rest of the project. And so properly bidding those, those numbers are, that we're talking about, whatever that final number is, and we'll have it for you this week, that's through the end of the project. And we also want to account for appropriate contingencies through the end of the project, you know?
So by the end of the week, we're going to have every single piece of supplies and steel and drywall that we need for the project by the end of the week?
The numbers, yeah, the numbers. We expect those should be, be vetted and finalized as well as the contingencies. Just, you know, you've raised some questions about contingencies. These are legitimate questions. We want to make sure that this project has sufficient contingencies from now till the end of the project, as well as the budget. So, so the numbers, what we're hearing from Suffolk is, all of the bid packages are in now. They're, they've been de-scoping and finalizing and refining those numbers. That's the number we'll get, you know, to the council. We've been waiting for that. We, we kind of hoped we'd have it for tonight. We didn't. And then, of course, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to make sure you have as much information to be clear, but the, in, in the figure, I know there's been a figure in the media, but that's, we, we don't have the final figure. We want you to have the final figure.
11% on 27 is about $30 million, right? You know, and then, I mean.
That's right.
And is that 11% figure, does that factor in the contingencies going forward in the future?
There's, there's some, but there's other contingencies that we, we need to look at, the, the other contingency. So, you know, the, the estimating contingencies, you know, that, that's through estimating and that those have been used, but those weren't intended to be used. But there are other contingencies, and we need to look at those because of these escalations. What does that do to the budget?
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
The significant part is these packages, though.
You don't counsel work? Good. Counselor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I, I think the problem is that this council is at a disadvantage to, to begin with. The last report we had, the budget report, was from August 21st, 2021. And that outlined a lot more than what is being said tonight. When, when Councilor Rourke talked about contingencies, that contingency amount was 26 million. And if you look across the thing, it looked like 24 million, but it was either moved to other accounts or it was no longer in there. So there was like a $2 million buffer in there. So 93% of that was gone at that time. And then when you look at the line items, they were overspent by 13 million. And then they also did a value engineering amount of 2 million. So when, when we're looking at this whole thing, this council is at a disadvantage because we're being told things that we should be, we should have every month a budget report on our desk of how those line items are being done. And I would ask for tomorrow morning, someone to pull those line item budget expenditures up till tomorrow morning. I don't care about the packets that are out the bid, I want to know what was spent up till tomorrow morning already in those accounts. Because we can all project things out, and I, I don't know that they're as accurate as what has been spent currently. And, and I think that's the only fair way to do it. And I would ask the manager to provide that to us in our packets once a month, like we asked. And we, we talked about this back in January, to have the building committee meet, and they should have these financial, financial reports, and we're not getting them. They should have already met in February, and now they should have a date to meet in, in March. And we're not seeing it. So if we're going to follow this, there, there's no one pointing fingers at anyone saying overspending is going on. All we're asking for is information so that we can provide it to the residents of the city and understand where we're going. It, it's not like someone's pointing the finger and saying that costs of materials haven't gone up. And as to point back to the ARPA funds, again, interim final rule was what Powers and Sullivan looked at. There's been a final rule that has come out from the federal government in January. And we've asked Connor to be creative and, and try to apply to the treasury, not through Powers and Sullivan, and spend more money on someone else to tell us their opinion, but to send it to the people who actually do give you the right to spend money in a certain way. And me personally, I would just spend the money that way, Connor. And, and I would just say that, you know what, when they come get us, say, you know what, um, see what happens at that point. Because this project is way out of control at this point. And, and if we don't grab it and let the public know where these expenditures are going, we could spend some of this money in areas that we could have used for this project and save the taxpayers money. And, and I'll, I'll leave you guys with that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a lot of my questions have already been answered, because obviously this is a very bad time to be in the middle of one of the largest construction projects in the state. My question's really, especially a long phased-in renovation. It's very bad timing for that. And my question was just whether or not we're going to get, this is the final number through the end, which is what you had mentioned. My other question was about the school building committee. Where are we on re-establishing that and having meetings? Because we're doing value engineering, we're doing changes to the scope of the project. Like, I don't know how they've been involved in that.
So there haven't been any value engineering or changes to scope? The school building committee in '21 was involved with, with some of those things. There haven't been any since. They, we do intend to have a meeting. They haven't disbanded, so they're still in existence. So we can call a meeting. This was, in, in fact, we, we're, we're considering having them, but we want the council to have this. This is, this is all about money, and it's the council, not the school building committee. And that's not to say the school building committee wouldn't be involved or apprised, but it's really most important that the council have all this information.
Right, but I think they should have had oversight during the entire time and been receiving all of the numbers from you. And I've had several of them approach me and not know whether or not they're even part of it anymore, which is concerning to me. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Counselor Drinkwater and then Counselor Yem. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's just important for this discussion to, to note what this council knew when, because it was just about a month ago that we were sitting here having a discussion on this very topic, where we were looking at a chart with the, the line items for the trades that have been bought out to date, where the, the bids have been awarded. And we went through and we looked at a number of line items where we could see that the bids came in over, some of them significantly so. We sat here and mentioned the HVAC bid, which was $6 million high. Masonry was $2 million. Drywall, the first phase, was a million and a half. And there were several others in the hundreds of thousands. I think Counselor Gitcher just mentioned the figure of about $13 million. The math sounds about right to me based on what we were looking at a month ago. So if you went through line item by line item with the information that we were provided based mostly on the filed subbid process, you could see that there was a substantial in, increase on, on those. And what we learned tonight, and it was mentioned a month ago, that there were several larger trades that were to be bought out in the coming weeks. And now we know that that was at a substantial increase. I believe Mr. Radloff just mentioned about $22 million high. So those, those give us the figures. It, it seems to me that while certainly high and it's a big issue, it, not so much a, a surprise. So I just, just do want to note that, you know, a large share of this increase, what was known based on the information that we were provided as the council last month. In terms of moving forward, I think it's critically important that we are able to, to fund the project that, the way it was designed. If that involves increasing the loan order, I think we need to do that. But I, I don't think we can just resign ourselves to say that this is going to be borne by the taxpayer. We are in a situation where these costs increases, it can be proven when you look at what's going on nationwide, were caused by COVID. And it, it's frustrating that with all of the money that's been appropriated, you know, from the federal government to the state, from the state to localities, that there is not an allocation that can be easily made to cover these cost increases. It's, it's frustrating that there seems to be a loophole where this issue of large-scale construction projects that were estimated before the pandemic and bid during the pandemic can't be, can't be addressed. So we need to figure out a way to do this. Madam Manager, you just mentioned it, that, you know, we're in conversation with the school building, building authority there. It sounds like in agreement with the, the concept that this was caused by, by COVID and, and, you know, we should be able to, to capture those costs somehow. It sounds like the, the legislature has to act. Maybe it's by appropriating additional state ARPA money to the school building authority to address projects that fall into our specific category and our specific timeline. I don't know the exact remedy, but we need to work with our state delegation to figure out what that is. Appeal to state house leadership to, to make sure they understand the situation and, and it, and it has to be addressed. Perhaps may, maybe there is a way to, to address it through, through the city's ARPA allocation. I, I know, you know, based on the outside auditors, I think we, we have to be conservative. We, we can't make mistakes when it comes to this. But I, I think moving forward, my prerogative is to make sure that we appropriate the amount of money that we need to. If we need to increase the loan order, that we do it, but we continue making sure that this is being addressed through, through the legislature, because it should not be low taxpayers shouldering the cost that was caused by a global pandemic. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question would be, is there an opportunity for us to do some value engineering, you know, sit down between the high school building subcommittee and the city, and try to go to see where we can do some, the, the value engineering? That would be my, my question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through Madam Manager to Speaker, do you want to make comment now or you want to?
I, I was just, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just raised my hand. I just did want, I have spoken to a couple of members of the state delegation. I will speak to all of them. They're aware of this, and this will be a collaborative effort.
Thank you. You're done, Counselor Yem?
The concern I have would be go with the, our state delegation and appropriate money to the MSBA. And MSBA is an entity that they cannot just give the money back to the city of Lowell only from the, the COVID-19 fund. Then they have to disperse to the fund to other cities in town who may be in a shortage like Lowell. So what would that be a guarantee that we will get that overreach that, that we are facing right now? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jimenez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this is the biggest project facing the city right now, and this is going to be a significant financial challenge here. I'd like to just comment that I agree with Counselor Drinkwater, that we need to build this school as it was designed. It's what the kids will deserve now and for the future, and it's important to get it right. However, I think there's lots of avenues to pursue this, this funding so that it doesn't all end up on the backs of low taxpayers. Whether it's Counselor Gitcher's suggestion of going to treasury and saying, hey, can we spend our ARPA funds this way? Whether it's talking to our state delegation to get them to appropriate more funds to the MSBA to come through us that way. The other pocket of money that I haven't heard mentioned tonight, I don't know if this would be ineligible use for it. I don't know if the money's already been appropriated or not, but is the ESAR funds that the school committee has. I don't know if this would be an allowable expense there or not. Mr. Mayor, maybe you could speak to that a little bit? And I don't know if there's been any discussions at the school committee level on whether or not they might be able to, to pitch in and help us out with this. Obviously, this is, this is of paramount importance, and, you know, we're going to have to get creative on how we fund this. So I'm, I'm open to all avenues of, of exploration here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the suggestion. Maybe we can go through Madam, I just want to respond to Counselor Jimenez real quick. Through Madam Manager to maybe request through Mr. Superintendent to Billy Joe Turner to answer the question about ESAR funds? Counselor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we all agree that this cost increase, COVID-related. And I respect Powers and Sullivan, they are, they are our consultant, independent consultant. But, you know, again, this is, a lot of the stuff, the $76 million come about to address any impact that COVID have, have had. any impact that COVID have, have had on the city and town. So, this is, clearly is related to COVID, to COVID-related. The market increase, the change in the market and, and, and the cost for materials and whatnot. I think, you know, I agree with my colleague that, that is, you know, we need to build this house, high school the way it's designed, but not put the burden on taxpayers. Using that, the state, the, the fund that we got from federal government, the APRA fund, as well as the state APRA fund, working with our state delegation and the MSBA's as well. I know that you said, Madam Managers, that there's not in their practice to, one, they put things to bond, they're not going to redo it. But this is not an ordinary situation. This is, things is that beyond everyone's control, be- beyond everyone, you know, thinking. It happened, one in a lifetime, just like the same thing as the, the APRA money, $76 million. And we, we need to be able to use a lot of those money, as well as the state APRA fund, through the help of our state delegation, reach out to all of them. And, and I also like to see as well that, you know, these final bidding, final contingencies before us, you know, before the next meeting, so that, you know, that's it, that this is it, whatever we do, this is it, however much the increase, it's not going to be another And that, you know, I, I concur with Counselor Kitcher that, you know, we need to be updated, you know, every month, so that, you know, we know what's going on, so that our resident can get up-to-date information as well. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Lady?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that, so I agree with what everybody's saying. We, we really can't go in and value engineer this. We have to stick to the project, stick to the plan and give everybody the school that they deserve and the school that we started out with. And I think, I feel confident through the meetings that you'll have, Madam Manager, and that we'll have with the state delegation with the powers to be. There's got to be an adjustment somewhere for COVID. This is something that, you know, every day, I'm familiar with him when I do. Plants were closed, plants had problems, costs go up, and it's just, we have to deal with it. So, I know we'll get through this and I know we'll work through it, but the updates will be helpful, to have those more frequent. But in no way do I want to value engineer some of these prices, you know, to get that cost down. So, thank you.
If no other comments, I want to thank both of you for making yourself available on last minute by the request of Madam Manager to come address this issue tonight. And I know that we're going to have discussion on this in further detail, whether it's next week, the following week. I just want to make a, a couple of comments, if no objection I want to make up from here. If, you know, I agree with all the, the comments, all the counselors made, all good comments, all good questions, and we need to move the, the project forward. At the same time, we need to clear the air as well because ultimately we answer to the voters and the taxpayers. As part of the reports for the following meeting, if you could also include the timeline, because it seems like the material order were caught in the COVID-19 pandemic and the supply chain issue. If you can give a timeline of the schedule that you ordered the material, when the material increased and so forth. And also just to look at a few other communities that are going through the, the project and where they are, how they are able to avoid the cost overage or, or not. They might be caught in the same situation, I don't know. But just to have, everybody have an understanding for information where we are to, to move forward. Thank you so much for being here again.
Thank you.
We now will go to the motion response.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Counselor Mosier?
Before we go into the motion response, could I suspend the rules to bring in a motion? 10.12, Counselor Robinson's motion. We have a speaker here that might not be able to be here through the whole meeting.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yep. And, and Mr. Mayor, if I could ask, while under suspension, if we could add motion, sorry?
10.13?
10.13. I, there's a registered speaker who's time limited as well.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Mosier to move motion 10.12, 10.13 up the agenda, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Motion is approved. Motion 10.12. Counselor Robinson requests City Manager have proper department work with residents in the Bouleou Street area of Centralville to create a winter operation agreement, second by Counselor Nunez. Counselor Robinson?
There is a registered speaker.
Thank you. We have a registered speaker.
Sandra McNamara?
I sent a little packet of pitches so he's got just a rough idea of before and after. The last big snowstorm we had was a disaster for our neighborhood. It started off, I think I was the instigator, when the plows were plowing the snow directly toward the residents away from the school. I in turn nicely had said to one of the plow drivers, you guys are supposed to be doing the opposite. You guys have the big equipment. We have shovels. We can't lift it. Most of us are elderly, we push it. So, he in turn said, didn't reply. Next thing I know, I see a, a truck goodbye, and I could have sworn it was Comcast, but turned out it wasn't. So, I called Mike, who is the direct supervisor for that area of plowing. I got to talk to him a few storms prior. And he wasn't available. Someone else I spoke to had said, Stan, we don't do Comcast, so you got to think and really pay attention what's on the truck. So, I said, okay. So, I said, the trucks are across the street at the school, I'll go take a picture. They said, okay, and send it to me. I said, without a doubt. I goes across the street, takes a picture. Water, utility, water from the boulevard truck was there as well. Not saying nothing to nobody, snapped the two pictures, coming back, man puts his head out of the truck and says, I'm Mike, I'm the guy you spoke to. And I said, oh, good. The one that didn't get back to me, but that's all right. Why are they plowing it all toward the residents 100%? We can't handle it, but we're obligated to get our sidewalks clean. We just, they're piling it, they're killing us. So, he in turn said, we have strict orders from Ms. Clancy that we had to send it away from the school directly to the residents. Said, all right, thank you very much for your time. Went, made a phone call to Ms. Clancy, and she in turn agreed that she did give the order that it is to be taken away from the school directly to the residents. So, I went on a long discussion, discussion with her, and I mean, at one point, it's like, what do you want, mind, you guys have the big equipment, we only have shovels. We can't lift, we got to push, most of us are elderly. So, after a long period of time, she said, what I'll do is have them take their plows and go directly down the center, down the street. The plows will go straight down the street, not toward the left, not to the right. I said, well, that's awesome. At least we'll both get 50/50 and work the best we can. So, that was that. I don't know who she spoke to after that, but they crucified us. I mean, I, they were looking for snow, I don't care where they were trying to find it, they were finding it to plow us in. So, we in turn, myself and neighbor by the houses, we're all out there just struggling, pushing it as they go. So, myself and the guy in back on the other corner by the school, I'm on the side of the school. He's a building actually is at the front of the school, where the front of the school is usually priority because, and you'll see in the pictures, there's special need buses that drop the kids off at the front of the school. And again, you'll see in the pictures how the plows didn't go sidewalk to sidewalk, there was mound of snow, not only on the street, but on the walkways as well. To where you'll see in the pictures, kids were coming off those buses onto snowbank, snowbank to get onto the sidewalk. And along with that, at that point to the front of the school, the crosswalks were blocked with a mound of snow. And again, those pictures were taken on March 3rd. That was last week. And I took them because of the fact I was supposed to, I thought we were going to be here last Tuesday, but again, it wasn't on the agenda, so we couldn't be, blah, blah, blah. So, I in turn took the pictures to show that this is what's going on. They're so focused with, now, I have an elderly couple that lives a few houses down. And the ambulances, I pray to God they're healthy, the ambulance is always at their home. Her husband is very ill. She called me while I was battling my little ordeal up the end, was all upset and like almost crying, and I said, Doris, Doris, calm down, calm down. I'll come down, just relax. She said, I don't know what this water department truck is doing, but he's just trying to knock off snowbanks, like the neighbors next to me, which all, everybody pulls, pulls snow from their parking spots and puts a mound of snow. That's down the whole street. She said, they just took half of that snowbank, I don't know why, and put it in front of my driveway. And she said, you know how I am trying, I pay to have my driveway immaculate, same with my walkway, because of the fact fire apparatus and ambulance is always at my home. And I understand that. And nicely enough, the one she hired to contract to clean her driveway and stuff, lives across the street and seeing what was going on and screamed at the guy. And went over and we cleaned it for her, and I was willing to help, but I had enough of my own problem up the other end of the street. So, now I'm cleaning the spaces on the street where our cars are parked, so our cars are all nice and clean. And the plow drivers called the police on me for throwing snow in the street. So, I nicely said to the officer, hmm, I've worked in the city for long enough, I know what I'm doing. And if you've been in this area long enough, you'll know my side of the street and where my cars are parked, you can see the hardtop. I don't care what size storm it is, because after we shovel, we then throw snow melt before we come in, because again, we're concerned, it, it's a terrible shoulder every day with the kids going into school. But anyways, that's another story. So, I said to the officer, do you know the law? He said, yeah, you can't throw snow in the street. I said, well, I know my law is I'm responsible four feet behind my property line, five feet into the street. I'm not throwing it in the middle of the street. I'm throwing it where I have to even it off because I can't push or lift these mounds of snow. So, if I layer it, I can be like a snowball and do one layer up and down, back and forth until the snow is down to the pavement. So, he left a little bit upset, he left. So, I then kept going, going. Finally, I got completed. So, I called the police station back and asked the officer to respond, which he did. And while we're sitting gabbing on the front of my steps, here comes a plow, bunch of snow right back. And he said, I don't know what you did, but I think this is going to go on all night. I said, well, I hope not. So, to make a long story short, one of Ms. Clancy's issues was the school is a drop-off, on the side of the school is a drop-off. When there was an agreement to make Victor Street in one way, it was solely going to be residents on the right, drop-off on the left. Was never, ever implemented from day one. Nobody at the school tried to implement drop-off. Parents got notices, they were confused because now teachers are parking there, because now it's, nobody's on that side of the street, and was upset. So, now again, it, it's, it's a free-for-all. I pray, and especially on a storm, where they do get the snow piles up on the sidewalk, that kids, if they can't get out of their car because the snowbank is in the way, then they get out on the street side and just run across the street. Same with the parents, and they dart out and go across the street. If they can lucky enough to start off from the end of the street and walk off and climb the snowbank and get over onto the street, then they do. I don't know up to this point how anybody has ever got hurt. But again, I feel I was targeted because I talked to the wrong person or I pissed somebody off, but it should have never, ever in this lifetime happened.
I agree with you, Ms. McNamara. Thank you so much for coming to speak, we're five minutes, so if you could wrap it up.
Sure. I just, again, I know many of you counselors got many phone calls from people on the street because I advised them to do the same as I did and notify everybody that we had contact phone numbers far, so they could voice, invoice their opinions on what happened to them during the storm, but seemed that they just wanted everything to come down the end of the street. But again, hopefully it's never going to ever happen again. I just don't know what to say or go from here. It's no reasoning for any of it, none. And I've been there 20 something years.
Thank you, Sandra. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, this seems like another issue that we've been dealing with, snow. It's, it's, has to go somewhere. And, and that densely populated area, it's, it's obviously not working, the current plan of attack. I think we need, really need to start looking at areas in the city where, specifically around schools with drop-off locations, like the freshman academy over here. And if snow operations have to pile it, there should be a commitment to remove it immediately. Not, not, not long-term storage, not short-term storage. I mean, this, i- i- it's true, and we've seen this in other areas. I think the, the speaker, Ms. McNamara, had a great point. Our residents have shovels. I mean, we have crews that have heavy equipment that can make light work of a lot of this stuff that's happening, and I think it's just a matter of planning. I don't think anyone's doing anything intentional. I just think we need to be mindful and come up with a plan that works for the neighborhoods. I mean, and that looks different from street to street, neighborhood to neighborhood. But I think anytime we can, if we can pile snow in dense populated areas and do some kind of removal, get it out of there. I mean, whether it's a contractor working that area and they pile it, I know in the past, that's how it was done. We'd pile, pick a parking spot, load a pile in there, and if it wasn't picked up that night, that was first thing in the morning, you were assigned to go get it out of there. So, I think we can definitely work towards accommodating some of these issues citywide. Thank you.
Counselor Gitcher and then Counselor Nunez? Counselor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, I mean, I think there's a lot of accusations that just were said, and I, I don't think it's fear that we don't, didn't hear from the Commissioner, Clancy, on this issue. I, I think that she should have a voice in this and also be able to give us a report on what is the plowing plan on that street. I've never heard of somebody taking from the left side and push it all the way to the right side. Normally, it's a 50/50 split, even on one-way streets that are wide enough. One half goes one way, one half goes the other way. But I, I do think that Commissioner Clancy should have a voice in this also, because I think there were a lot of accusations that are there that none of us are actually aware of, we weren't in those conversations. So, I, I just think that in fairness, that she should be able to speak on this also. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Yeah, we will obviously get a full report from, from the Commissioner and anyone else involved as a response to the motion, as we typically do.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Counselor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this is just one of the location drop-off and resident competing, both are important. So, I know Counselor Robinson suggests, suggestion with regard to cleaning it, clear it right away, especially if we're a drop-off and resident are competing, that we take the snow out of the area that way, issue like this would not occur. And I'm sure there's other resident as well that who's, who reside close to or in front of the drop-off in school, also share the same concern. So, if you could have a policies of picking those... picking those snow up right after, you know, right away, that would be, go a long way to help residents, especially those who are old and who cannot do it themselves in terms of shoving and shoving snows and stuff. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great suggestions. Here are no other comments. On favor say aye, opposed say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Motion 10.13, Councilor Drinkwater requesting manager partner with the Lowell School Department to find the ways and means to install alternative communication boards at city and school playgrounds in order to aid in the communication on nonverbal, nonverbal children. Second by Councilor Mosia. We have a registered speaker.
We do, Mr. Mayor. Amy Harris?
Oh, hi. I'm sorry. I'm kind of new to all this technology.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Hi. My daughter is autistic, but this is something that would help so many special needs children that can't speak. A lot of times when you take your kid to the park, you don't actually want to bring a tablet or electrical devices that could break or fall or what have you. But having a communication board so a child can say, hey, I'm hungry, or I'd like to turn on the slide, or something as simple as I need to go potty. This would be a really huge improvement in not just communication, but in the education of different children. The educators could use this. This is something that is being done at the Riley School for CSA program. They, the PTO and stuff, they got funding and that would be a really good example of one of the communication boards that's there. In addition to that, if we're able to have it in several different parks, I think it would make not only Lowell's community, but it would bring other communities to Lowell. I know Shed Park is kind of a heart park for Barica residents and other residents. And if this is something that I see in Drake, it, I think it would really service not just the special needs, but like Lowell as a whole. And we're trying to clean up Lowell since the 80s. Not trying to date myself or anything, but we've come a long way. I just, I'd like to see more for our youth within the city. So thank you for your time, city council members, and you as well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to Ms. Harris for speaking tonight and also for reaching out to me on this, excuse me, on this issue. Upon hearing from, from Ms. Harris who raised this and made me aware of the efforts at the Riley School through the PTO organization to create an alternative communication board on the playground. I, I looked into this a little bit and found out that earlier this fall, the city of Malden had installed these at several school playgrounds and is in the process of installing them at all their school playgrounds. And there's something that I believe will prove to be low cost, but really important in creating an inclusive environment at our both school and city playgrounds. These are things where, you know, many non-verbal children or children simply with different communications needs oftentimes will use a communication board, whether on a tablet or a physical communication board that they carry with them. This is simply just a larger version of it, where if at the playground, you know, they can simply point or gesture to a symbol for a certain playground equipment that they may need to go on for water or snack or what have you. And I think it'll create an inclusive environment. And I know, you know, the motion reads the way it does because I know within our school playgrounds, the, the city maintains certain playgrounds at schools, others times the school does. And I think these would certainly be valuable at city playgrounds as well. So hoping that, you know, through discussion with the, the school department as well as the parks department, we can look into if we can install these at as many city and school playgrounds as possible, just to enhance the experience for as many children as possible. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I hope to see some progress here. Thanks.
Councilor Leahy?
Sure. Just a quick question to the maker of the motion. So I looked it up. It, it does the, it's just a board, right? It doesn't, it's not like an iPad, but it's just a board, right, that has all options on it and everything like that?
That's correct, Councilor. Yeah, correct. They point a gesture to a physical board.
Electricity or anything like that.
That's correct.
All right. No, it seems like a really good idea. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have a gentleman here, and I'd like to, while we're under suspension of the rules, go to 9.2 under miscellaneous. No, it's not in my motion. It's just under miscellaneous. Yeah.
So moved.
Yes. Just a quick correction. I got the date wrong because when I filled out the paperwork, they kept saying you want the 8th for the meeting. So it should be Monday, April 4th. Should be the correct date. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Chow, City Manager Donahue, members of Lowell City Council. For the way of introduction, my name is Joseph Jusom. I'm a history teacher at Lowell High School. Myself and my colleague Allison Cuzara, who could not make it tonight, are lead teachers for Action Civics here in the city of Lowell. Approximately seven years ago, the Lowell Public School System became involved with a nonprofit organization called Generation Citizen. Generation Citizen works with school districts all around the nation to bring action civics education to the classroom. Students at both the high school and eighth grade level work with their teachers to identify an issue affecting their community, figure out the root cause of that issue, create a system of tactics, contact local legislatures and change makers, and set a goal and advocate for systemic change in their cities and towns. Many of you have been contacted by our students in the past, and perhaps have already been contacted this year. I come before you tonight because this year, the Lowell Public School System has been charged by Generation Citizen with putting on a Lowell Civics Day. On Monday, April 4th, 2022, students from all around the city will present their projects at the UMass Lowell Inn and Conference Center in what will be the first official Lowell Civics Day. The long-term goal is to make Lowell Civics Day a semi-annual event, one in the fall and one in the spring, where students present their projects to volunteer judges and gain the confidence that only comes with taking pride in what they have accomplished and knowing that those in power have heard them. Additionally, we want to make Lowell Civics Day a day where prominent citizens of the city of Lowell, business leaders, members of the Lowell City Council, Lowell School Committee, and Lowell Public Schools volunteer their time to help celebrate the achievements of our students and rededicate their commitment to making Lowell a better place to live, work, learn, and play. In order for our students to be invested, our city needs to be invested. No greater investment can be made than that of civic education of our young citizens. They are our future. Therefore, I respect for the request that the Lowell City Council officially declare Monday, April 4th, 2022 Lowell Civics Day. And I also want to extend an open invitation to all the city council members, Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Donahue to, an open invitation to be judges on Lowell Civics Day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jusom, for coming to speak. It's going to be very exciting. April 4th is going to be a Civics Day in Lowell. Thank you for presenting that. Motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Council Leahy, second by Councilor Scott. On favor say aye. Motion is approved.
Mr. Mayor, is there anybody else on Zoom that is ready to speak on anybody's motion so we don't have to keep them there all night long as well as anybody here?
Mr. Clerk, any other registered speaker?
Item 6.1.
6.1?
Thank you.
Councilor Mercier requesting to move item 6.1 up the agenda, second by Councilor Drinkwater. Motion is approved. This is 6.1. This is votes from the city manager. 6.1 vote approving TIF agreement 330 Jackson Street LLC, wayfu reading and second reading by title motion. I'm going to ask Mr. Clerk to write this in 16 fonts, not, not eight fonts like this. Vote approving certified project application for 330 Jackson Street LLC and authorize a tax increment financing TIF agreement. So registered speaker?
There is, Mr. Mayor. Jerry Lynn Darcy?
Good evening. I'm Jerry Lynn Darcy. I'm the Senior Vice President of Real Estate for LaPoli Companies. And I'm here this evening with my colleague Shaw Rosen, who works with us as a senior project manager. And we have submitted the TIF in, in association with 330 Jackson Street, which is a parking garage. It's one of three projects that we're constructing at the Hamilton Canal. And we're very excited to start construction on the garage. We actually had some delays based on some administrative land court issues that we worked through. While those court issues were being worked through, we also had the benefit of completing the precast construction of the garage. So it is actually already built. The precast is ready to go. It's sitting in Vermont. And our hope is to start construction within the next 30 to 45 days. We have gone back and forth with the city. And what you have before you is a final version of what we believe is a mutually agreed upon TIF to coincide with the tax incentive program for this type of, of project. Additionally, we have submitted an updated construction schedule, which we will reference for the TIF.
Any other comments, question? Motion to adopt by Councilor Rook, second by Councilor Nune. Councilor Janes?
Hi, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager or the speaker, I'm not sure who's, who's best to answer this, and if this is the time for these questions or not. But I had some questions about the building itself in terms of the plan to construct it. I don't know if it's being constructed similarly to the HCID garage. And if so, what's going to be required for street closures for the crane needed to erect a garage? Is there any plans for having electric vehicle infrastructure inside the garage, particularly concerned in the way of Level 3 chargers is something we don't have in the city and I think could be a huge asset to be added as part of this project?
So just to step back a little bit, we do have a, a foundation permit for the garage. And we're very far along in this process. We've worked with, closely with the city, with the city's engineer. And we had developed a logistics plan, a traffic plan. However, that was based on a start date that never happened because of the delays that, that we had. We actually have a meeting with the city's departments to go over an updated logistics plan and traffic program to manage the vehicular and pedestrian circulation during the construction of the garage. It will be similar. Actually, we're using the same precast company that the city used for their garage. This garage is going to be smaller. It's right next to the courthouse. And it will obviously have an impact on, on traffic, which we hope to minimize and also reduce the amount of time that that impact will, will be of concern for the, for the public and, and the people nearby. With respect to the EV chargers, I will say that we just completed a 1,200-car parking garage during COVID. I actually led the construction of a 1,200-car parking garage at Riverwalk, which is one of our large assets. It's on the river. And we built that, we erected that in 46 days. It's the largest parking garage structure, you know, one of the largest north of Boston. And the same company did that. So the great news is that we have daily precasts. Not only did our 1,200-car parking garage here, but they also did the city's garage. And that was one of the reasons why we, we worked with them to design and produce the shell for this garage. The EV charging stations are something that we have already installed in the 1,200-car parking garage. Actually, one of our tenants specializes in that. So our intention would be yes, to include them for sure. I have to get back to you in terms of the technology and the actual connection because I don't have that information right, right now.
Madam Manager?
I, I, Mr. Mayor, I would refer this to Christine McCall. She's been working with the LaPoli Companies, particularly regarding the construction period. As was referenced, this was anticipated when Middlesex Street was closed down, and it was a different story. Now that Middlesex Street is open to traffic, I'll ask Christine McCall to, to address that. So we are not going to close Middlesex Street for this project.
Yes, we, Jerry Lynn was correct. We do have an internal staff meeting with the project team next week. So that will include engineering, planning, building, so that we can all be aligned on road closures. I'm blanking on the street name. I want to call it Spring Canal Street. There may be a closure there. And then we may also have to change the traffic direction. But we, the conditions, as the manager mentioned, has changed since we last met with LaPoli Companies to do the traffic mitigation plan. So we will be meeting next week to update it. It may actually have to come back to council if it exceeds into the right of way beyond a sidewalk, which can be typically permitted through the engineering office. But because of the adjacent charter school and also the residence, we will make sure that we communicate fully what that is. And to be clear, our, we want to minimize and limit road closures as much as possible, even for our own projects. We just do it when deliveries are happening. But they, they are going to have a crane, so we will see some closures. But we will work to minimize it as much as possible and also communicate it so that it's not different every day or confusing. It's very clear and that there's proper directional for vehicles, but also for pedestrians and also safe walking paths for pedestrians that are ADA compliant. And that will be on the onus of, of LaPoli Companies to comply.
Councilor Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This may be a project that this garage is needed in addition to the garage that we own, the 900 parking garage, parking space. This is 500 parking space. It may be something we needed for the development of the Hampton Canal District. There's also the amount of TIF that we give. It's also big too. So that said, I want to know the agreement that we have with the LaPoli Company. How many jobs this will provide to the city?
In their application to the state, they state that they're going to be creating six permanent jobs with the, for the parking garage. And I, Jerry Lynn's on the call. There will be obviously a creation of temporary construction jobs. I don't know that exact number.
Okay. So what happened if the six, six job is not there? What will happen with the TIF agreement that we have with the LaPoli?
So if the property owner doesn't meet its job creation obligations by the end of year five and annually thereafter, we have the right to recapture the tax exemption benefits. And we actually laid out a schedule. So if and we actually laid out a schedule, so if there's, so we have a fifty percent threshold and a hundred percent threshold, so if they only create three jobs, we reserve the right to capture fifty percent of the exemption, and obviously if they create zero, we reserve the right to capture all hundred percent.
Who will monitor that?
We do, so because this is a state program that has a local tax incentive option, the applicant is required to submit annual reports to the state, and the state certifies that report, we also require that same report. So for all TIF agreements, we monitor job creation annually.
Well, thank you. I also want to add, I know that Madam Managers also spoke to that this construction of this parking garage should be coordinated with the city DPD and making sure that it does not impact the traffic in Middlesex Street, because eventually, very soon that we have the project, the lot overpass is going to be finished, and that Middlesex is going to be very busy, you know, we don't want that disconstruction to interfere with the traffic in that area, not too much if not.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank everyone for the responses to my first volley of questions. Thank you very much, those were all very informative, and I appreciate them very much. This question, I think, is probably more for the manager than anyone else. Obviously, earlier tonight, we heard about a significant financial challenge facing the city. This is my first TIF agreement as part of the council, so I'm not fully aware of where this stands historically in terms of other agreements that we've made in terms of jobs and investment dollars in the city, and how it stacks up and how it compares. I just want to make sure we aren't setting a new level here to put us behind the eight ball when we're already trying to catch up on some funding things, thank you.
Thank you. So, just backing up, because it was the prior council that approved the land disposition agreement that provided for this project, namely, the garage was first and was required to support the other two buildings, and that's why the garage is first up, and then the others. There's parking requirements in the Hamilton Canal District, and this is one way of doing that, that the developers paying for their own parking and not trying to rely on city parking garages, which are pretty in demand out there. As far as a TIF agreement in terms of job creation, you know, and Christine can speak to this, but you look at what the project is and what are the reasonable number of jobs to expect, these are new jobs, so it's not adding to an existing project, after looking at it, planning and development feels confident that that's a reasonable number to create. I think the other consideration is, and obviously it's a declining balance, but going from zero taxes to realizing taxes. So, it's a balance, it always is, when you examine TIF agreements, getting investment, getting job creation with what the incentive has to be. As far as, I'm not sure, your question of how it stacks up with other TIF agreements, they're all different, you know, Christine, I don't know if you can comment on that?
Yes, so, thank you, Manager John Hugh, they are all different, but we do feel that this is fairly consistent with how we, in recent history, have addressed TIFs through this program. We don't think we're setting any new precedent where someone's going to be asking, you know, for an extreme TIF, it's ten years, it's fairly reasonable, we're trying to get that to be the city standard, and a hundred for year one down to twenty, that we're trying to keep, we think that's a fair TIF, and so we're comfortable with this schedule, and we don't think it's setting a precedent for too much generosity, I guess.
Okay, thank you very much, I look forward to seeing this garage project start, it's been pending for a while, so thank you guys very much.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Madam Manager, actually, through Christine. This was from a resident, so I just wanted to ask, they were worried about the road closures in that area, and I don't know anything about cranes, so I'm just asking the question. They wanted to know whether or not they could use a tow crane like they did at the Hamilton Canal Garage to avoid road closures.
I would have to defer that. Second, the last Tuesday in March, we'd probably prepare that in time.
That would be great, especially around the road closure, that seemed to be the concern, so, thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you, I have the same concerns about the traffic, so, you know it's a nightmare over there with the school and the hospital, so, what type of, when's this meeting coming up about the traffic?
It's either next Wednesday or next Thursday, so we'll have a, we hope to have a finalized plan after that meeting, so we should be able to have a report back to the council. There may be some back and forth next week, but we should, we'll have a report by the end of the month.
Okay, and then, what would happen if we delayed this a week, just to really look at the TIF schedule?
So, this is a state program, so they apply to the EDIP and actually require state approval, so we, we need, after a vote of the council, we actually have to submit it to the state for their March meeting, and I believe this was the last possible date we could get it in front of you, but if we, the council truly felt that there was a delay needed for further analysis, we probably could make the next week work, but the MOBD meeting is the week of the twenty-second, and they have, it's like a twenty-member board.
Well, I guess my question would be, is there any way to, I have complete confidence in you, but I would like to talk about the numbers, I don't know if it's, you know, I mean, we are in a financial crisis, I know they're trying to build a building, they're facing the same things that we are, but, you know, maybe there's a way to tweak the numbers a little bit better in our favor, we appreciate that the building's going to go up, but, you know, a hundred percent the first year, and then eighty, eighty, seventy, sixty, you know, maybe we could do a little bit better.
I will say, they came to us with a much more generous TIF for twenty years, so we're very comfortable with where we're at, and I'd just like to point out, if this parcel remains vacant, it will be a vacant lot in our downtown that's illegally parked on every day and will only realize three thousand dollars a year in property taxes. Year one, there will be zero, but if you look from the second year to ten, in the last column, you will see the additional realized property taxes that we've received, and obviously, when we've owned it, it's been tax exempt, so we've been earning nothing on the parcel. And then additionally, the TIF does not exempt personal property, so the city would still collect personal property taxes for the construction, so there would be personal property taxes realized in year one after construction.
All right, and you're confident that this is a very good, reasonable deal that could come up?
I think it's very fair.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No other comments?
If I can just speak to that, in saying this, so we've been working, you know, we have extensive experience and an amazing track record working in gateway cities, we have hundreds of millions of dollars worth of projects in the city of Lawrence. We have already provided a few important projects of significance there, and we also work in Haverhill. The TIFs that we use are very common, and as Christine mentioned, they are oftentimes fifteen to twenty years. The unique circumstance about this project, which was approved by city council through the LDA agreement, which we went back and forth with through the attorneys and the city council and the administration, you know, did speak to this specifically. So it was anticipated that this would be part of the process, the construction and the development process. The other thing to point out is that this is one of three projects, we agreed to build a garage first, and as you can imagine, with respect to the construction cost, it's very difficult for developers to put up millions of dollars for a garage before you start your project, and we were willing to do that, and we accepted the risk, but the financial investment upfront is substantial, and I would say that it's a garage that will be well-received by the community, and we recognize, having the vacant parcels out there, that the courthouse and the surrounding neighbors are really excited about having a parking garage and a facility there to utilize.
Free vote, please. No other comments, good job Christine, representative of the city, motion to adopt by Counselor Rook.
Already have the motion, just a roll call.
Yeah, okay, it's just a roll call.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitchia?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rook?
Yes.
That's eleven yeses.
If there are no other items that have speakers on, we'll go back to where we left off, there's one more, what number?
Item five point one D and F.
Five point one A?
D.
Five point one D, and which other one?
F.
F, okay. Motion to suspend the rule to move motion response D and F up the agenda by Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Leahy, motion is approved. Motion D responds homelessness initiatives with nonprofits. Who's the speaker, Mr. Mayor?
Carl Howell.
Thank you, thank you for the moment. My name's Carl Howell, I'm the chief program officer at Community Teamwork, speaking on the response D. Just want to say thank you to the city and the city manager for the leadership and coordination effort over the last few years. This report points to all the great work the community and the city have done, but also points to where we need to focus in the future. If it wasn't for the city manager's leadership to bring in the national expert on individual homelessness, creating the homeless action plan, and the homeless service coordinator that the city hired, the community would not be in as strong of a position as it is to take on the most complicated aspects of this housing and homeless crisis. I know myself and others have been vocal advocates and at times critical, however, Community Mark recognizes that there is an urgency to the homelessness and housing crisis, and we applaud the city and the community partners for routinely coming together to identify solutions and provide the best services we can with the resources that exist. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Noonan?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, like Carl said, that a lot of good stuff in this report, and I want to see if, through you, Mr. Mayor, ask Christine McCall, directors of DPD, to give a synopsis of all the successes that's been between our partners and the city, if she could do that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Noonan, thanks Carl. So this is just a brief summary of what we have done to date since the city manager convened the coordinating council, which hired the national expert to help us address homelessness in the city, but specifically geared towards adult individual homelessness. So, a few years ago, we merged with the Balance of State, and so we have a coordinated entry system, and so in Lowell, to help coordinate amongst all the resources, we created the Lowell Connector, and so all our homelessness providers and housing providers, we meet weekly, and we actually, so I should back up, we created a by-name list that identifies all of the unhoused individuals that we're aware of in the city, and then we meet every week, names are submitted from various partner agencies, we review for duplication of people, duplication of services, we do vulnerability assessments, we connect clients to much-needed services, housing units, vouchers, mental health. We also help with document readiness, actually, I'll give Michael Gary credit, he came to one of our meetings to help the complicated process of protected records of birth certificates. And so, the Lowell Connector, we meet weekly, we go over resources, we make sure there's no duplication, and then that is really, we go over everyone on the list, and then we also have weekly COAT meetings, where we actually, it's the coordinated outreach and engagement team, and we're focusing on individuals and groups that were called high utilizers, so they, you know, they engage with police, they engage with emergency response, and we also review known outside sleepers and encampment areas. In addition to that, we have monthly provider meetings, I think I mentioned that earlier, where we just, homeless providers meet monthly to network and resource share. Some of the other successes that we've had that was funded through DHCD and also the city's CDBG funding is non-congregate sheltering program, so we've coordinated with CTI, Life Connections, and DHCD to create beds of emergency non-congregate shelter in response to the needs of our population. We also funded emergency congregate shelter beds, we've done significant outreach programming, so we've coordinated and funded outreach teams through Life Connection Center, who actually go out into the community and engage with individuals living in areas not meant for human habitation, including encampments and rough sleepers, and this is in an effort to connect those individuals to supportive services and housing resources. We have funded and supported the creation of a low-barrier drop-in program at the Elliott Presbyterian Church. We've also funded a diversion program with LTLC, and this, the goal is to prevent long-term homelessness for individuals for whom an immediate solution can be identified. We've, to date, we think we've helped more than fifty people find alternative shelter. And then, so that's just sort of on the immediate unhoused side, this report also included an update on affordable housing, so we're facing an affordable housing crunch in the city, in the state, nationwide, and it's not just for our unhoused population, it's from everybody who makes minimum wage to who makes six figures a year. Anyone who pays more than thirty percent of their income towards housing is considered housing insecure, regardless of what your income is. And so I just use this opportunity to identify the ways that the city council and the city manager have supported affordable housing projects in the city, so we calculated, I think, in the past six months, almost eighty units can be realized within the next year, and so that's towards the, I believe, CTI as part of their ongoing education campaign that I referenced, let's talk about housing, identified creating three hundred new units regionally, but I believe our coordinating council set a goal of two hundred in the city, so we are well on our way. We also are in receipt of home American Rescue Plan funding, about three million dollars that we will, we're crafting the outreach, not the outreach plan, the action plan now, soliciting comments, and we'll actually be posting the public comments we had to date, and that will specifically go towards creating housing units for our unhoused population. And then, just to talk about education and outreach, just, you know, what is affordable housing, why is it so hard to construct? CTI and the city partnered with CTI, Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership and Coalition for a Better Acre to become a municipal engagement community, so we have Chappa come in and help us with community building, coalition, and education about barriers to creating affordable housing and how we can work together as a community. And then, I also included a note about, let's talk about housing, the city, we did create a homelessness task force that developed a plan to reduce homelessness, part of this plan was to develop two hundred units, and over the past few months, CTI, Greater Lowell Community Foundation, the Lowell Plan and the Chamber of Commerce have reestablished a coordination effort to educate the public about the need for housing to end homelessness.
Thank you very much, Christine. Also, here indicated that between the city and its nonprofit partner, we are able to identify homeless individual, and how many are there in the city? And how many are there in the city?
So we estimate that we have, on our list right now, I believe, we have 250 chronic individuals identified as chronically homeless. That does not include the 75 people who are staying at LTLC. That does not include 30, I mean, it does include the people who are staying at LTLC. It does include the people who are staying at Life Connection, and it does include the over 100 individuals that are in our hotel program and also who are in emergency housing. We estimate, we just did a pit count, so we estimate that we have about 50 outside, 35 to 50 outside sleepers. And so that number includes our sheltered and unsheltered homelessness. And we're in the process of updating that list with our partners because a number of clients have been housed and we have been noticing an increase from sort of a transient population. So we're trying to confirm if certain folks are here to stay or if they were just sort of passing through and engaged with any one of our providers. Because we actually do tracking engagement dates as well.
So this individual, we are in contact with them, we help them if needed, in term of, you know, case management or housings and stuff like that, right? Please to?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. And question maybe to Madam Manager is, what happened with the coordinating council or the housing coordinator? Do we have that individual in place now? Madam Manager?
Madam Manager?
We don't. We've been advertising for that position, and I believe we're talking about possibly moving it. So we're advertising for the position. But we are considering moving it over to the Health Department for a number of reasons and programming and so forth that might be better suited there than Planning and Development. If we do that, we'll be bringing a minor change to the council as far as where the reporting structure should be. But based on a lot of things, outreach and so forth, the Health Department might be, as we've gone through this, that might be the more appropriate location. So, you know, we did a number of interviews and were looking to hire someone who ended up not taking the job, took another job. This is another competitive position, so we're still at it.
Just like the city engineering, right? Engineering.
Right.
I just want to add, Mr. Mayor, there's a lot of work being put into the helping homeless population through DPD and our city partners. I can't thank all of them enough. So we still have a lot more work to do, but the work is there. A lot of good success here. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I want to thank Christine McCall and her team for the outstanding work they're doing in this area, even without the homeless coordinator in recent months. But I also want to recognize and thank CTI and Carl Howell and Karen Frederick. Let me just say, two years ago, there was nobody who was stepping into this role of developing permanent sustainable supportive housing for individuals, just didn't exist in the city. And so, other than the shelter. And CTI has stepped up to the plate, as you can see in the, in the report. There are a number of projects that they're pursuing, that we're supporting where we can, and that's making, you know, I'm confident that's going to make a difference. But, so thank you to CTI for, for taking the lead in an area that was above and beyond what you normally were doing, and we are grateful that you stepped into this, what was a vacuum as far as providing permanent sustainable housing for individuals.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Thank everybody for this work. This report is great. And are we being competitive with the position? Have we evaluated and are there some tweaks needed to kind of draw in potential candidates into that role?
We are looking at that. Christine has been involved in that, looking at other, it's an area that is sought after right now, but.
It's a very sought after industry, but it's also a very unique position. Not many municipalities have this. So we, you know, we did find someone that we really liked. We did receive feedback from other candidates. It sort of informed a tweak to the job description, and part of the reason why I've been advocating to put it in the Health Department. The Director of Homelessness Initiatives in DPD, while we are a great team and we work together on a lot of things, they really are in a day-to-day operation by themselves. Whereas if they're in the Health Department, they'll work hand-in-hand with Andre Gonzalez, who goes out and does needle pickup, who's fantastic, and also the co-op team. And so there will be a built-in team who is working on this day in and day out. And DPD will also, and that was one of the feedbacks that, feedback that we did receive. But DPD will still play an active role in funding the programs and then also looking at building and supporting affordable housing in the city.
Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you. I just have one question for Christine, through Madam Manager. The report says that about 100 individuals have been placed in temporary housing since December of 2020. This is for the, excuse me, the hotel placements, I believe. And it says that they're funded through FEMA dollars, CARE, CDBG. Is that funding continuing? Is that, is there any end in sight for that funding?
Yes. June, June of this year. But CTI is, we're coordinating with DHCD to try to get an extension. But as of right now, a lot of the funding does end this spring. But we are working to extend it. And I will say Chelmsford has been very great to work with because they are the community in which primarily, most of our individuals are staying.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know we're talking about a couple of different motion responses at the same time here, relative to response F on the Affordable Housing Trust. There's a lot of great information in this response, both about the potential value in establishing a trust for the city and also a number of existing funding streams and what's being done with them in terms of the creation of affordable housing here in the city. There is a recommendation in the response that it be referred for discussion to the Housing Subcommittee. It's, I think, a very good recommendation. I would like to, I'll make that motion and slightly amend the recommendation to request that it be sent jointly to the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee. And it's also noted that in addition to the discussion of a trust, there should also be a discussion on, you know, other regulatory barriers and other ways through ordinance or whatever to create more affordable housing. And just want to quickly note that the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee met several times last year to begin that discussion of potential ways to increase housing production within the city, having discussions on things like potential new ordinances, including an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, inclusionary zoning ordinance. So hoping that these are topics that can be added to that discussion that can happen jointly in those two subcommittees. So with that, I'll make that motion to refer jointly.
Seconded by Councilor Janess, on the favor of the AI, motion is approved. Any other comment? Councilor Yem?
I was gonna, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna make comments in response to the motion response F regarding the Affordable Housing Trust, and I want to echo my colleagues.
Are you making the comment on F or on?
But that's kind of what Councilor Drinkwater kind of rolled into it.
Yeah, okay.
So it kind of rolled into that what Councilor Drinkwater was.
So everybody done with D, we'll go to F now?
Yes, we're kind of on the same thing. And I read the report, and I want to thank Ms. McCall, and I like the report a lot, and then put my interest regarding to creating the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And I like that a lot. And the question that I have would be, what's a different, are we going to be overlapping with CPA, CPC? Because portion of the CPC, it's 10% to do open space recreation, and then the other historical preservation, and a third of the CPC would be community housing. So maybe Ms. McCall can, can comment a bit on that? Thank you.
That's a great question, Councilor Yem. So this report just sort of outlines, you know, what an Affordable Housing Trust Fund is, how we could create it in the city. Other communities fund their Affordable Housing Trust Fund with that minimum 10% from CPC or with their allocation of home dollars or with their allocation of other federal funding. And so I sort of gave that brief outline in this report and why I recommended the referral for further discussion, because I don't know that we should jump to creating another board to review funds that we already have allocated in programs. And I'll, you know, I'll toot my own horn. I think the Community Preservation Committee did a good job. And so I don't know that we would want to just defer that 10% off to another committee. But it's definitely worthy of a discussion. So I think that's the recommendation.
Thank you so much. I agree, and on one hand, I like the idea of creating by itself the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. However, we, as Councilor John Drinkwater mentioned, that we should refer to the Housing Subcommittee in addition to the zoning. I would also add the Neighborhood Subcommittee, if that possible, because, you know, some of this affordable housing is affecting certain neighborhood and all of that. So if we can incorporate that, the Subcommittee in it. In addition to the CPC, I was, Ms. McCall is part of that, and I'm a member of the Lowell Housing Coalition. We have an active coalition, housing coalition right now, and we have a meeting coming up. And if we have the Municipal Trust, I mean, they could be part as members, and we will invite them, part of the Subcommittee meeting, to get them also involved. So this is the main issue of the affordable housing that facing the city and I think collaborating together and maybe with the new Municipal Housing Trust to create and focus on that, and then lead CPC to focus on the open space and historical preservation. That's just, just my, my thought. And I appreciate Ms. McCall, if you would like to maybe add a comment to it.
No, I don't, I'm not opposed to the idea of an Affordable Housing Trust. I think it's really important. I just think the 10% allocation from the CPC is not going to be enough to realize enough affordable housing units. And so I do think we'd have to figure out another funding source to supplement the Affordable Housing Trust. Councilor Drinkwater did bring up inclusionary zoning. That would be interesting because a developer would actually have to pay into a fund that would, you know, could be overseen by the, and administered by the Affordable Housing Trust. So I do think we wouldn't, before we create an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and say we're going to fund that group with the 10%, we're going to have to figure out another income source to support the program. Just to give the council a little bit of context, we are working with a nonprofit to supporting a construction project to create nine unit, to, we're submitting home funds to their project, contributing home funds to their project to support the creation of four affordable housing units, and it's about, going to be about $700,000. So the cost of constructing affordable housing is very, very expensive. So we want to be really mindful that if we create an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that we are funding them to do, to do the work.
But we also can learn from about 70 communities who have established the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. We can learn from them and how do they finance it. And I've read in the report, one of the potential sources in addition to CPA fund is called exclusionary zoning payments. If you could, you know, comment on that a little bit?
Sure. Inclusionary zoning is a more progressive zoning ordinance where there's requirements for developers to either build a specific number of affordable units within every, every project over a certain threshold. So just, you know, if they're, if they're going to build 10 units, five of them have to be affordable. Or if they don't, they have to pay the equivalent into an affordable, into a fund. So if they don't build the minimum required affordable units, then they'd have to pay for it. And so that could be used to fund an Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you.
Yep.
Before we go on, just to address Councilor Yem's request to have Councilor Drinkwater's motion, which was already passed, to go to the zoning and the housing. Mr. Clerk, can we go backward to amend that if the maker of the motion agrees to it, to add the Neighborhood Subcommittee to that as well? Would that be possible?
I think if the maker of the motion disagrees to include the Neighborhood Subcommittee, it wouldn't be necessary for Yem.
It doesn't? Or maybe make a special invitation to the Neighborhood Subcommittee to be part of the meeting as well, if you could do that?
Whatever the method, I'm happy to accept the friendly amendment, just to add the Neighborhood Subcommittee to the other two.
Sure. And as always, any member of the council is welcome anyway, but once Councilor Drinkwater make the request for Mr. Clerk to schedule, send out a special invitation to the Neighborhood Subcommittee to attend as well, that'd be great. Councilor Noon, I noticed your motion, you want to talk. Mr. Howell is still here. Do you want to speak on this motion response as well, or are you okay for now? Sure, sure. Councilor Noon, it's okay, the director of speaker go first. Okay. Mr. Howell?
So yeah, just, just, it's along the same lines of what everyone's been kind of talking about. But, you know, as you're aware, Community Teamwork, we've been doing affordable housing and advocating for affordable housing for over 50 years. More recently, as Christine McCall mentioned, that we've been really engaging with this "Let's Talk Housing," where we're working with the city, but also the Greater Lowell Community Health, Community Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Lowell Plan, really to kind of educate and bring awareness to the crisis that we have in the city and what is also across the nation. But Community Teamwork raises the innovative idea of a housing trust and any type of flexible funds that can be utilized to develop affordable housing within the city. But with that said, Community Teamwork advocates for the city council, as a part of the process, to evaluate the regulatory barriers that challenge the production of affordable housing altogether. That's what we really want to look at, is what is preventing organizations and CCs from developing? Because if there is fun, if there's, if there is money, we can't build because of regulation, and that's going to be a challenge. So I'd really advise the city council to really look at those kind of regulations and ordinance and see what can be developed and changed. Thank you.
Councilor Noon?
I want to thank the speakers, Carl from CTI. You know, I'm very hopeful for this, similar to CPA, Community Preservation Act. It's good for the city because, you know, giving all the need out there that we, you know, have to look at other resource, other revenue. And this CPA is one of them, and this could be another. And, you know, when you have 100 community in Massachusetts, you know, sign on to this, why not? You know? So I'm looking forward to a discussion in the Subcommittee, Mr. Mayor, the Joint Subcommittee of Zoning and Housing. I think, I'm hopeful that good thing will come out of this. So, thank you.
No other comments? Well, now go back to the orders where we left off with the motion response A. Motion response A, snow emergency parking options. Any comments? Councilor Scott?
Yes, thank you. When I put the motion out, I kind of left it pretty vague. I just asked for options across all districts for residents. There was a lot of vehicles that were towed during the last storm. People from, you know, Pataqueville, South Lowell, it's very difficult to get to the garage downtown. A few of the things that I mentioned during the meeting were a parking shuttle or an odd even parking type scheme during snow emergencies, and neither one of them are actually addressed in this reply. So I would like to see those included in further, a further reply. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I'd like to echo what Councilor Scott just mentioned. Again, I go through this report, and they're saying it's not feasible to use green space or parks, parking lots, which I don't understand why we're prioritizing the clearing of the snow there anyways. And, I mean, it's just, it seems like as a result, we're prioritizing the parking lots and green spaces that aren't even used, to the point where they've removed half of the garbage barrels out of these parks because of lack of use. But then they're saying it's a necessity to clear those, the parking areas because of the use or whatever. That doesn't make sense to me. And again, Centerville, they're not going to walk from a parking garage downtown over, across the bridge back to Centerville, especially in a snowstorm. I mean, it's just, it's not happening. And that's the people that are healthy. The people that, that aren't healthy, it's not even option. So it's, we're either going to keep chasing our tail and leaving cars on the streets, and it's going to be a toe, repeat, toe, repeat situation, and nothing gets cleaned, or we're going to really put our heads together and find alternatives. I understand Colley Stadium, it's, I believe it's dedicated as a med flight zone, so that's a whole different ballgame. But, I mean, we have McPherson's that has But I mean, we have McPherson's that has two or three different parking lots. Even if we had to set up combs every other spot so the people had spaces to clear their cars off, what, I mean, I'm sure if we've really put the effort in, we can figure out an alternative to trying to get people, which has shown historically is not working. People from far out areas outside of the downtown are not utilizing the parking garages. And I'm, I'd like to say I'm thankful for all the residents that have been using the parking garages. I noticed over the last couple storms, it's been quite an influx of, of our residents using it and thank you to those that have been helping us. But we still have some areas that are too far away from the garages. And I think we need to look into those districts and those neighborhoods and see how can we at least compromise and get people closer to home option, alternative. So our DPW and, and our contractors can clear the streets. Safe, effective, efficient. Thank you.
Any other comments? Go to B, motion response, vacate and abandon properties. Any comment? Counselor Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sunday, we had a flag raising in a mass at St. Patrick's and we had a parade route that started from the church and went over to City Hall. And as we're going down Merrimack Street, we all kind of looked at the same time to the right and saw this building, 484 Merrimack Street, in such disarray. It looked like it was in a war-torn, torn country. It, it looked like it should be knocked down, but I could still see the potential there to bring it back to its beauty. And, and I don't know why we can't. I don't know what the status is of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Did you see that? Yeah, it's, it, do we not have people out there that want to make an investment to spend money, to make money, to create, see an old dilapidated building and, and just get excited to put money into it and bring it back to its glory? And make a profit on it when they start renting it out or the bottom floor, what used to be a breakfast place? It's a shame that it's gone in such disarray. I think when you look at, I saw every one of these places on the website and I looked and a lot, you have a beautiful street with beautiful homes and then you got a place like, I don't know, Westford Street or, or Starbird Avenue. Well, they're going to demolish that.
Is it running with the battery?
All right, now it's back. I, I just don't know why we don't have people that want to improve these properties and bring it back to the beauty that it once was. I know every now and then I'll see a piece of property, make a motion to see what we could do with it. And I could give you about five pieces of property that I brought forward and I don't know exactly how it happened, but people bought it and turned it into a beautiful place to live. There's a place on Clock Road, right on the corner of Havela Street, beautiful now. It was horrible at one point, beautiful now. 877 Andover Street, moss, green moss was growing on the building. An owner bought it, it's beautiful now. Brings up the property values to the neighbors. This is a shame because in, in, sprinkled in different neighborhoods, there's a piece of property that's so dilapidated. There's another property that I'm looking at on Andover Street as well, but I think it's in the, sometimes they go to probate and there, there's a lot of family dispute over who should get it or this or that. I understand that. And I know that people get old and they go into nursing homes and their family don't take care of it, but gee, why hang on to something if you're not going to take care of it and let it run down? And I know the city's been to that property numerous times, cutting the grass because the grass is so high. And when I bring it up, the city goes there and cuts it. We take a little bit of that money that we used to do that and we held, hold it towards the property. But I, I wish we could just find a way to do it a little bit faster so people can give his opportunities for housing right here. If people could buy that, buy the property, fix it up and rent it out to somebody. So that'd be a nice home for someone. I don't know. That's my comments. Thank you.
Counselor Yem, do you have a comment also?
I just want to let the Counselor Musia know that the property on Merrimack Street that you mentioned, it's privately owned and the gentleman owner building next door as well. And he was trying to do all of that himself. So if we were having a Municipal Affordable Housing Trust that we can pony up and push them to renovate it. So I'm not sure we as a city can push somebody to renovate, to make it look more presentable now that Merrimack Street is going to be, you know, beautify part of the acre crossing.
Oh, I thought you were the realtor that was selling that property. That's...
I'd love to, I'd love to, ma'am. It's a beautiful building, but it just, the owner was unable, does not have enough financing to renovate it. He tried to do it himself for a while now. So maybe the manager can comment on. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
I think each property has a different story and, and in terms of condition or if, if there are code violations and so forth, the city can go out, inspect site. We, we can't order someone to renovate it, make it beautiful, though we'd love that ability. But there are other enforcement actions that sometimes, you know, may encourage someone to, to do something or another with it. As far as there's, sometimes things are tied up in probate that we have seen multiple times on some of these properties. And so that's, the city's hands are tied. Starbird is one we've talked about a lot. And so there are, there are different stories behind each, each one of these properties. But I think the most effective thing the city can do is, is continued enforcement in, in monitoring the enforcement aspect to it. And, you know, with the transformative development initiative that's going to be taking place on Upper Merrimack Street, hopefully, you know, programming including incentives for development and maybe mass development can, can have, play a role to bring some opportunities to, to, to property owners in that stretch of Merrimack Street.
Thank you so much, Madam Manager. This is similar to the motion Counselor Nune was talking about downtown, just kind of give incentive, you know, like carrot and stick kind of thing. So encourage, provide some grants and money so the owner will, will convert that into affordable housing, livable because we need it downtown. Thank you so much, Madam Manager. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson and Counselor Rourke?
Counselor Robinson? Thank you for this list. I, I know each property's completely separate story. Is, is maybe through you to the solicitor, is, is this something that if a property comes up on the market, the city could temporarily take ownership of and kind of work with a community partner and offer, you know, as a form of affordable housing or something? I know no profit, I'm not looking, I'm not saying to grab it, just to retain it so it doesn't get snapped up and, you know, flipped, so to say. So it could be kind of a partnership between a nonprofit in the community looking to do more affordable housing units.
Madam Manager?
I think what typically the city has done is, let's say there's a property that a nonprofit wants and we can try and support it, support the nonprofit to purchase the property. Is Christine McCall still here? We've had programs in the past where, where sometimes that's the avenue for getting the property developed rather than the city purchasing the property. So Christine, I don't know if you have, in other words, trying to build support to get the property developed by a nonprofit?
We have a number of federal entitlement dollars that we do use to fund nonprofits and CDCs to develop housing. I think right, affordable housing, I think right now the challenge is site control and the rising costs of real estate in the city. It's, it's almost like you need, honestly, you need somebody with deep pockets who can buy something high and sit on it. And that's just not something that the city can necessarily do. I can't speak to the, to the taking, the temporarily taking if something comes onto the market. But we, we do try to fund as many affordable housing projects as possible. But it's typically easier when we're using federal dollars that the entity already has site control. And right now, site control is the hardest part in this current market.
Thank you very much. And just a follow-up. Courthouses, Heard Street. I know it's a process, but what can we do to try to at least get an answer if that's something short-term, long-term, they'd be willing to release? Because again, that, I, I think that's a perfect venue for some of these projects.
Yeah, we'll, we, we've been in communication with DCAM about what the disposition intent is. We, we will reach out to DCAM again. At the time, they were still in the process, trial court was transferring. So the trial court has to transfer control of the property to DCAM. DCAM then goes through their due diligence process. I don't think they've begun that yet. That's where they'll hold community meetings, advertise, you know, in terms of interest. Once they've gone through the list to make sure there's no government need, either state or local, and then they, they will hold community meetings to see what is the best use, what does the community want to see, what does the neighborhood want to see? And then they'll put it out to bid. That's pretty much the process. I know I've spoken to Commissioner Gladstone a number of times about the courthouses and that was their intent is to do that. We'll try and get an update though, to see where, where they are yet at this point in their process.
And the conversations around homeless assistance from the feds or the state coming to play with these type of properties, do you think?
I mean, that's up to, the, the state will put a request out for proposals, I suspect, and, but I think they'll do it once they talk to the community and hold their meetings. As I understood it, they'll do outreach to the community to see what does the neighborhood want, what does the community want to see happen with these properties? And then they will craft, they want to work with the city in terms of the ultimate use of, of the properties. And we're talking about two of the properties anyway, the courthouse on Gorham Street and then the courthouse on Heard Street. It has been a challenge because, you know, with the property being vacant, homeless individuals have been trying to either get into the property or, you know, and it, and it's caused a problem for the neighborhood and we've talked to them about that when this has been coming up.
Thank you.
So we'd like to see them move on that sooner rather than later.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Counselor Musia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One last thing. I'm thinking about banks that acquire property in the city and they, their bank, the bank that acquires this property is somewhere like out in California or out in another state far away. And they, they don't care because they don't stay here and they don't see what's going on and they don't designate someone to look after the property. So over time, it goes in disarray. I think we ought to tighten up the laws that say, you acquired this property, you have a certain amount of time to do something with it. Through the laws, that's what we should do. And secondly, if we had property in the city that we could, that the city would acquire through tax title or whatever, I believe that we should offer it out pretty reasonable to a group like Habitat for Humanity and they create beauty and fix that home and then they, they give it to, they sell it reasonable to a first-time home buyer. And there's the American dream for that family that own a piece of the rock by, and it goes back on the tax roll and it's a cycle of wonderfulness. That's what I say. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I'm through you, Madam Manager. Do we still have the program that we started a few years back that at the end of the year we accumulate all the tax title properties and then sell them off?
Yeah, the solicitor has been working on that.
So yeah, yes, we do have that still. And in fact, when the, when our auditor was in the position of the treasurer, I, I worked in conjunction with the auditor. I have had a meeting with our new treasurer and we're planning on moving forward with the tax title takings. We had taken a pause and, over COVID for obvious reasons, but it's, it's really time to, to start that up again. And one of the things that we should, we should also note is that even though we go through this process of selling our lean shares, we, we also have numerous exemptions. So there's veterans exemption, elderly exemption. Also, if somebody is putting their property on the market or wants to enter into a payment plan, we make all of that available. And all those things will continue to be, to be available to those that are, find themselves in tax title.
Counselor Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe if it could, Mr. Mayor, ask Eric Sligo to speak to bank-owned properties that in the past, I think a couple of years ago, the AG, the Attorney General Office have a pilot program. And do we still have that program?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Council. Counselor Nune is referring to something that was mentioned briefly in this, this response about the pilot program we did at the Attorney General's Office to target properties, abandoned, vacant properties that were for receivership in Centerville. We, I'm sure the members who were on the Council at the time remember, we picked out about 14 properties that had been identified by both staff and neighborhood members in, in Centerville as being vacant and having code enforcement issues. And the Attorney General's Office, in something they'd never done anywhere in the Commonwealth before, agreed to kind of take that group en masse in a, in a small geographic area and, and push them all through the receivership process at the same time. That was an overwhelmingly successful program. We, of the properties that were identified, all but one were, were turned into, turned back into code compliant occupied properties by the end of the process. The one was unfortunately deemed ineligible because of some tax issues that, that put it underwater at the time. The, the Attorney General's Office, that process kind of ended with the pilot program and while it was a success, COVID hit and they, the Attorney Generals, we, we didn't pursue any kind of follow-up with the AG's office during COVID. At this time, we've contemplated, we had a receivership program that we worked with the Law Department on for several years. And so we contemplated restarting up properties, being put into receivership again. Obviously during COVID, because of the crisis, we held back on trying to do any kind of aggressive property issues because of the, the challenges everybody was suffering from.
The mayor said, you know, our city, the Law Department don't have the resource, the manpower to do that. And since the project has been successful in the past, I think, you know, I, I would invite city DPD and the Development Service to reach out to the AG office and to see if we can restart that or continue that pilot project to, you know, to help us in terms of the manpowers, because they have all the attorneys at the, the AG office. We, we can't afford it. So, which is a great benefit to the city. It sounds like a success when you have, you know, a takeover of, you know, 13 of the properties and one been complied with the code and what.
Not the microphone knows. I'm going to allow just one more comment.
Can I second that motion that, that's on the floor, please, Mr. Mayor?
Second by Counsel Robinson. On behalf of the I, motion is approved.
Could I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a quick one. In, in the real estate world, we call it REO properties, that real estate owned, that mean the bank owned. This is the common, go back to Counselor Musia and, and Counselor Nune. I'm a real estate broker and I manage some of the bank-owned property. When the property was foreclosed by the bank, at first of all, we will fill out an application and pay the fee to the city. I think the city has a registration for bank-owned property. I think the city has a registration for bank-owned property. I think $500 to $600 back then. I'm not sure we still have that or not. And number two, the properties being managed, a real estate broker like such as myself will be responsible to maintain, to make sure the grass cut. If the, a lot of properties, sometimes people still live there. The bank pay for taxes, water, sewer, and the tenant and previous owner still live there free, rent-free, mortgage-free. They don't pay anything. One property in particular, I managed for the bank. The bank has owned it foreclosed three years ago, and it's still still, the previous owner still lives there and pay nothing. So to let you know that these properties are really scarce right now, only one or two that I manage in the in the city, and we maintain that, you know, grass cutting, make sure everything comply with the local code and then health code. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Hearing all the comments, we're going to go through the the next one. Just want to make a quick comment is 921, and as you all know, this Sunday is one hour ahead forward. So, but today, we're still on the same 921. We have a few more motion responses. We have a couple of votes. We have motions to do, so I'm going to just call each counselor to make one comment. If you have any comment, we're not going to come back to have you make second or third comments going forward. Let's just finish the agenda tonight before 10 o'clock. C, motion response. HCID construction, any comment? Thank you, Counsel Rook. E, motion response, signature with traffic, any comment?
Just a quick thank you for changing the signs to Christine McColl and her staff. It's definitely better, and just ask that we continue to keep an eye on it because it is still new, but I appreciate the improvements.
G, motion response, most odd, any comment? Counsel Robinson?
Just had a quick question. In the, thank you first and foremost for the report back, and does anyone have an idea of what kind of funding they'd be looking for for a pilot project or something like this?
That's a really great question, and I don't know the answer to that. I'm not aware of any organic artists in the city that we could ask, so we would have to do a little additional research on that.
Okay, thank you. Can I actually refer this to the Arts Subcommittee, please?
I want to make a motion to refer to the Arts Subcommittee, second by Counsel Yum. On the favor of the eye, motion is approved. Go to H, motion response, south common, any comment? Thank you, Counsel Scott. I, motion response, canalways, no removal, any comment?
Once again, just a quick thank you. The chart is extremely helpful, and I'm putting that in a place I can easily find it, so thank you.
J, motion response, traffic calming, any comment? Counsel Robinson?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I, on this motion, one of the main streets that I mentioned when I brought this up was Hildrith and Ludlum. That's one of the, I'd just like to see that intersection added for consideration. Thank you.
Counselor Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish we could add a calming method on Broadway Street in front of the senior center. I created a calming section over there so that the seniors could walk from the senior center to Market Basket, because a lady gets seriously ill when, I mean seriously hurt when she got hit by a car, and it seems that there was a, some sort of a fixture on it that made the sun change the light to blink, and it's somehow broken, and if we could just revisit that and address it, it was a solar light that allowed a yellow light that people pressed. It was run by the sun so that they could cross, indicate to cars that they were ready to cross the street. It's not, it's not in good shape today. I don't know what happened, but that was the DeMullis family that put that there. It wasn't the city that paid for it, so I don't know what to say, but if we could try to figure something out.
Thank you for bringing that up. I see Madam Manager is taking down notes.
Yeah, we can look into that specific, but that's exactly the type of traffic calming measures we want to deploy with QuickBuild in other areas of the city to see what works, so that we eventually could hopefully fund permanent changes to the roadway to that forces cars to slow down. But we'll look at, I just had a quick clarifying question.
That is forcing cars to slow down, no doubt about it.
The route, it, there is blinking lights at the crosswalk, and it's not solar, or it is solar?
It is solar. It's blinking if the, I think the panel is damaged somehow.
Yeah, we can, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Let us hear your hands go up. Counsel Scott? No, on this, no. K, motion response, rapid recovery plan, any comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Christine McColl, very detailed report, Mr. Mayor, and I want to see if we can send this to the Economic and Downtown Subcommittee, because there's a lot can come out of this. I think this is probably something that we, the downtown, is waiting for, because this hopefully is going to help this work if we don't shell this report, we put it to work. It's going to help the upstairs, foot traffic for downstairs, and this is going to be, this could be something that we're looking forward to make sure that the downtown is is full of businesses and and people coming and visiting. Thank you.
Motion by Counsel Noon to refer to Downtown Economic Subcommittee, second by Counsel Robinson. On the favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We go to the next one. L, motion response, applicant tracking system, any comment? Hearing none, that complete that session. Now I need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Scott. On the favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry.
Michael, I have a comment. Michael?
Who has a comment?
Counsel Getchere.
Counsel Getchere, which 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 motion responds?
On L.
On L. Counsel Getchere, you're on Zoom, so I did not see your hand, so go ahead.
Just just a quick comment. Thank you for the report, but I just want to clarify something. It says at the end of the report, if it is the wish of the council, MIS and HR welcome the opportunity to demo the various elements associated with units recruiting via executive session in order to personally identify personal data currently loaded in the system. This function is not the city council. It would be the city manager's function. It's an operations function. I just wanted an update on where we were, because I believe it's imperative that we put this in place for personnel. It is not the city council's function to allow somebody to, the opportunity to demo something for their department, so that that would be a function of the city manager. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other comment? Thank you, Counsel Getchere. We now go to votes from city manager. We did 6.1 already. We're going to go to 6.2. Vote, declare surplus property at 93 Mammoth Road, waifu reading and second reading by Vote declaring surplus property located at 93 Mammoth Road, Lowell, Massachusetts, authorizing the city manager to seek proposals under the provisions of MGL Chapter 30B for the disposition of said parcel, namely 93 Mammoth Road Lowell. Any comments?
Yes.
Counselor Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a problem with 93 Mammoth Road in the vote. I will support that. But what I'm concerned on is, this is a fire station that was dedicated to Lowell firefighter Barry Gannon. He was the last firefighter to die on in the line of duty fighting a fire on June 1st of 2005. All too often, this city goes through the ceremony of honoring someone by naming the building after someone, not just that one, but I've seen it at Bishop, at Shaughnessy Terrace. They named the center after Joan Sinkowitz McGann. They build homes. Her name is no longer anywhere. I don't want to do that to this gentleman here who died in the line of duty. What are we going to do when we sell this building, and what do we do with his name? What happens in a case like that? I'm sure the family was moved by the fact that his, their loved one died, but now that's going to be sold, and I have no problem with it being sold. What do we do in a case like that? I don't know.
Madam Manager?
Yeah, we can, we can look at that, whether it can be part of the RFP. I think the other idea is to maybe we talk to the chief, the fire chief, about whether there's something else also working with the family. I mean, the, as we know, the fire station is in horrible condition and has been, so, you know, in its current condition, it's unfortunate, but it's not, you know, the honor that it may have been once upon a time. So we can, we'll certainly keep that in mind as we prepare the RFP. Talk to the law department. I mean, it, we don't know what the proposals are going to be, so, you know, I think it's going to be incumbent upon us to look at the proposals, see what's best, and then maybe have a conversation with the fire department and the family as to, maybe they don't want a name on that, but something else. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle.
Yeah, thank you. I don't want it to be lost. Thank you.
Great, great comment. Motion to adopt by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counsel Janess. Roll call, please.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yum?
Yes.
Matt Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchere?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
6.3, vote accept expand 15,000 fiscal year 22, first responder, Naloxone Grant, waifu readings and second reading by title. Vote authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to accept and expand an additional grant from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health regarding the fiscal year 2022, first responder, Naloxone Grant Award in the amount of $15,000 for use by the city of Lowell Police Department. Any comment? Motion to adopt by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Mercy. Roll call, please.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yum?
Yes.
Matt Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchere?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
That's 11 years.
Seven orders from the city manager, 7.1, order 60-day trial, waifu reading and second reading by title. Order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning Section 266-6 thereof entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations, Temporary Traffic Regulations hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. Any comment? Motion to adopt by Counsel, Counsel Leahy? Second by Counsel Loon. I thought you had a comment there. Roll call, please.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yum?
Yes.
Matt Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchere?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
11 years.
Eight, 8.1, the Finance Subcommittee March 8 was postponed. Nine, petition, 9.1, claims to 10 property damage. Any comment? Motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation.
Move and approve them.
Move. We're going to the 10 city council motions, and let's see record timing. 10.1, Counsel Scott, request city manager have the appropriate department place no parking signs or paint no parking markings on the corner of Meadowbrook Street at Moore Street to allow truck tuning access, second by Counsel Yum. Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to make it quick. This is pretty self-explanatory, so if you've ever driven down Moore Street and been stuck behind a tractor trailer backing, back and forth, back and forth on the road, then then you'll understand this motion. So the neighbors reached out to me, asked me to have something marking that corner so that residents don't park there to allow easier turning. Thank you.
Thank you, all in favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, the motions carry. 10.2, Counsel Scott, request city manager have the appropriate department provide a report on how projects are prioritized from the open space and recreation plan and how funding sources identified, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made this motion after our discussion about Opera Funds with the parks. I really just wanted to try to understand how we prioritize, whether or not it's by the most used, the most densely populated, the worst condition, just some criteria and, you know, how we seek funding. There weren't that many projects that had been brought forward under the CPA funding that were public projects, so I just wanted to see how we decide, you know, what funding pool we're going to use for those. Thank you.
Other comments on the favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, the motions carry. 10.3, Counsel Scott, request city manager provide a report on the status of the plan to transform the Lowell Transitional Living Center on 193 Metisack Street from an overnight-only sober shelter to a 24/7 low-barrier shelter to provide social services during the day, second by Counsel Janess. Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This this motion actually is word for word from the 2019 report that was that was made from the group that had met about the homeless. I don't know exactly the name of the group, the homeless initiative that you were working on, so I really just want to see if there's any update or any movement on that from the homeless shelter. Thank you.
No, all the comments on the favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion 10.4, Counsel Scott, request city manager report on what steps have been implemented to bring the recycling contamination rate down and what enforcement efforts have been happening, second by Counsel Leahy. Counsel Scott?
Thank you again. Through you to Madam Manager. Our budget showed that we're about $900,000 in increased tipping fees on recycling, and the Opera Report had showed 145, around 145,000. I couldn't find the exact number when I went back to look. Revenue loss in fining. So I really just wanted to follow up to see what we were doing to try to bring that number down at this point in time. Seeing a lot of the green barrels in my neighborhood just filled to the top with trash bags all over the place, so I can't imagine that there's very much enforcement. I haven't seen the orange stickers or anything that we, you know, saw in years past, so if we could get an update on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hearing all the comments on the favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion 10.5, Counsel Noon, request city manager invite the school department to share elementary and secondary emergency relief as a funding to help pay for the improvement of college stadium, second by Counsel Musia. Counsel Noon?
The motion speak for itself, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. 10.6, Counsel Noon, request city manager provide city council with a report concerning what actions Lowell Public Schools are taking relative to youth homelessness in the city, second by Counsel Robinson. Counsel Noon?
Mr. Mayor, as far as homelessness and sometime the way we define it, one, we can see in the shelters or in the hotel, I actually specifically, I mean, I said it in broad, but specifically, I want to see if we can, the city, the school can identify the unaccompanied teen that bound from, you know, friend's house to friend's house and and that because, partly because either a family is dysfunctional of, you know, parents don't get along and stuff like that. It happened quite a bit in our school department. I learned of it. And also, the other part of ours is that multiple family in one space because the cost of rent is so much. So they are programmed out there to help these young people, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm sure with the report will will really highlight some of the the need that we we need to deal with. Thank you.
That's a good motion. On the favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. 10.7, Counsel Noon, request city manager update the city council on the status of licenses for Lowell marijuana retailers to deliver product directly to customers as outlined in the Cannabis Control Commission's new rules approved October 2019, second by Counsel
because we don't want to stay behind from a neighboring city and town, you know, in term of have this established so that, you know, one, it's established. If you have a place here, that, that individual or that group or that company can then sell elsewhere too in terms of the delivery. So, there's a lot of criteria here, and I know that the director of Development Service, Director Eric Slaker, working on it with Madam Manager on the host community agreement, just like we did with the recreational marijuana, so want to know where, where we at and, and what we need to do. Thank you.
Counsel Yum, you're breaking the stride.
Just a, just a quick comment, because I, I was contacted by one of the resident regarding the dispensary. Are we, do, does the city require that these places are certain mile, feet from the school restrictions?
Yes.
Because this particular resident was concerned, and there was one about to get to the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Manager, do you want to answer now or wait?
Yeah, the, when, when the council adopted the ordinance, there are restrictions in terms of distance from school and so forth, and so in approving any host community agreement, those were taken into consideration for, we're talking about a retail dispensary?
Both retail and cultivation, I'm told.
Yeah, we can, we'll get your report on that.
I appreciate it.
If there's a specific one, you can let me know, and we can address it for the resident.
Thank you.
Here are the comments on favor of the eye, opposed, you know the eyes have it. The motion is carry. Motion 10.8, Counsel Noonan, request city manager work with city solicitor to provide the city council with a legal opinion concerning whether the city has a legal responsibility to ensure homeless individuals moved off encampments on public property are provided other housing opportunities, second by Counsel Scott. Counsel Noonan?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have seen the encampment right now, what we, we know where some encampment are. Right now, it move into public properties as well as business, in front of businesses and stuff like that. It's hard to get them off the property, so sometimes they don't know what to do, and it's also deters some of the clientele to come in, so, and that's why I'm asking the question. Thank you.
Great motion. Here are no other comments. On favor of the eye, opposed, you know the eyes have it. The motion is carry. Motion 10.9, Counsel Getchere, request city manager have the proper department provide the city council with a list of road surface treatments, crack sealing, fog sealing, monaco surfing, and cave sealing planned for the upcoming paving season, second by Counsel Yum. Counsel Getchere?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counselor, from afar. On favor of the eye, opposed, you know the eyes have it. The motion is carry. Counsel 10.10, Counsel Getchere, request city manager provide the city council with a list of water main breaks repaired by outside contractors during fiscal year 22, July 21 through current, the locations of each of the water main breaks, the date of each water main break, the size of the water main break, and the cost of each repair, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Counsel Getchere?
The motion speaks for itself.
Thank you again. On favor of the eye, opposed, you know the eyes have it.
Can I just ask for clarification, like, from the maker of the motion, why, why you want this?
Because we're...
Counsel Getchere?
I, I don't know why I would have to answer this, but, but because I want to see the expenditures out of the contracted services, because they've gone up, and I saw in the budget that there is a $600,000 budgeted item that was never there before, so that's the reason why. I'd like to see where the money is actually going.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion 10.11, Counsel Getchere, request city manager provide the city council with an update on available overtime funds in the fire department to keep all fire companies open until June 30, 2022, second by Counsel Janess. Counsel Getchere?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did speak with the manager on, on this item, and I'll wait till we get a report from the fire chief, but I wanted to also thank her for allowing the companies to be open fully until the motion response comes back. Thank you again, Madam Manager.
Here are the comments on favor of the eye, opposed, you know the eyes have it. The motion is carry. Last motion of the night by Counsel Leahy, request city manager have proper department explore feasibility of allowing more than one business being conducted from your home address, second by Counsel Mosier. Counsel Leahy?
Excuse me, I'm not seconding that.
You know, I said, I apologize, Counsel Mosier. Who would like to second Counsel Leahy? Counsel Scott? Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Could you, so, somebody called me up and asked if they could register two businesses out of their home, and I don't know if it's a city ordinance or a state ordinance, but if we just get a legal opinion on, if you can run, I mean, today you run more your businesses out of, on your computer, so they're wondering if they could run two types of businesses that are internet, I guess, you know, not really a physical operation, say, out of their home, but more internet, so they're wondering if, if you're able to do that.
I see Christine McColl at the microphone.
So, it's actually regulated in our zoning, home-based businesses, and just to clarify, it is actually something that we've heard from E4All and other business groups in the city that it would help, because sometimes if you work from home and you're a consultant, you want to set up different bank accounts for each different client, and banks won't let you unless you have this permit. It's dictated in the zoning. I just want to be fairly clear, no customers are allowed at your house, no, so if that change were to come forward, it's only for people who work from home and don't have any customers in the home.
Right. Does it have anything to do with state regulations?
No, it's, it's in our zoning code, home-based businesses.
Maybe we could just take a look at that and see if we can up, modernize it, I guess.
Sure.
Thank you.
I need a loud voice vote on favor of the eye, opposed, you know the eyes have it. Motion is carry. Any announcements? Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge that today is International Women's Day. We've had a lot of women who've played significant roles in the history of the city and continue to do so today, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that and, and thank them for their contributions.
Great announcement. Any other announcement? Counsel Mosier?
I, I just want to say that it's nice to look at people's faces again with the mask being lifted, so I see all happy, smiling faces here, and it was nice to see that. Thank you.
Great recognition. Any other announcement? Twelve adjournments. Motion by Counsel Mosier, second by Counsel Noonan. On favor of the eye, opposed, you know the eyes have it. Motion is carry. Thank you. Have a great night.